Good evening. I call to order the October 8, 2024 closed session meeting of the City Council at 5:31 PM. Madam City Clerk, could we have roll call?
Councilmember Massey.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Detoy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Saman.
Here.
Mayor Francois.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Mayor did not receive any speaker cards and there are no virtual attendees.
Okay, great. Let's all recess to closed session. Bracelet?
I'll put mine right in the middle for now.
Says six o'clock, yeah. I don't know about that. Looks like we're ready to go here. Okay, welcome, everybody. I call to order the open session of October 8, 2024 regular meeting of the Hermosa Beach City Council at 6:01 PM. And we have a volunteer with the lovely Janice come on up and, or you can do it right from there, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, and justice for all.
And Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call?
Councilmember Massey?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Detoy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Seaman?
Here.
Mayor Francois?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Mr. City Attorney, please provide the closed session report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The City Council called this meeting to order at 5:31 PM. There were zero public comments on the closed session agenda. The City Council then recessed in a closed session pursuant to the items listed, and no reportable action was taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now, we're on to announcements and upcoming city events. I have a few, and then I'll leave it off to my colleagues. The City Council Candidate Forum, hosted by Leadership Hermosa Beach, is sponsoring the City Council Candidate Forum. This is coming up on Thursday, October 10th, at 6:30 PM. The forum will take place in the council chambers right here. It will be also broadcast live on the city's public, education, and government cable channels, and available live and for replay on the city's YouTube channel. And then we have the Alzheimer's Association, which is holding its 2024 Walk to End Alzheimer's 5K fundraising walkathon. That's on this Sunday, October 13th, at 9:00 AM on Pier Plaza and the Strand north of the pier. That's held annually in more than 600 communities nationwide. The Alzheimer's Association Walk to End Alzheimer's is the world's largest fundraiser for Alzheimer's care, support, and research. Members of the public are welcome to attend this free event. All participants are encouraged to raise critical funds that support the Alzheimer's Association important work. And additional information can be found at www.alz.org. Okay, well, we got two more here. Pumpkins in the Park, Saturday, October 19th. Friends of the Park will host Pumpkins in the Park. That's from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Edith Roadaway Friendship Park, located at 350 Prospect Avenue. Planned activities include a costume contest, face painting, Halloween photo booth, games, and pumpkin decorating. Everyone's welcome to attend this family-friendly event celebrating fall and the Halloween holiday. And then we have a friendly reminder to the community that the 16th Annual Skechers Peer-to-Peer Friendship Walk will be held on Sunday, October 20th. Each October, the Skechers Foundation hosts a 3.5-mile walk from Manhattan Beach Pier to Hermosa Beach Pier and back to raise funds for public education and children with special needs. Check-in and registration for this year's event begins at 8:00 AM at the Manhattan Beach Pier. For more information on the walk or how to donate funds, please visit skechersfriendshipwalk.com. And Skechers is S-K-E-C-H-E-R-S. That's how it's spelled, to make sure you plug it in right. We look forward to seeing everyone at this community event supporting a good cause. Okay, anyone else have anything? No? On my left here? Nope? Okay, great. Now comes time to approve the agenda. We have one request from staff to remove item 17A. That's the side letter to the General Supervisor Employees Memorandum of Understanding. And we also have a request to add an item. Before we get to that, are there any other council members that wish to remove anything from consent calendar, any other comments on that? So regarding adding this agenda item, it requires a two-thirds vote to add it, and it is a report on the city's options regarding public camping ordinances in light of the city of Grants Pass Oregon versus Johnston decision. And this requires the City Council to make a determination that it's urgent. Mr. City Attorney, could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
What it is that we need to determine in order to add this onto the agenda?
Correct. So as you stated, Mr. Mayor, the item 17D, it was not posted on the agenda 72 hours in advance. The Brown Act, particularly 549, 54.2B2, does allow the City Council via two-thirds vote to take, place the item on the, on the agenda. The requirement is that there must be need for immediate action, and that the need to take action, action came to the attention of the city subsequent to the agenda being posted. I will, of course, defer to the City Council's discretion on the immediacy of this topic. I would note that the city did receive a request recently. I believe Deputy City Manager Crespe may be able to speak to it better from the South Bay Cog regarding the city's participation in its Functional Zero Street Homeless Program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, do you have anything to add regarding the urgency of this item?
Only if there are any questions regarding the Functional Zero effort that we would like our city to participate in and have announced early enough before the end of the month.
Right, there is something, there is an event at the end of the month, but basically, if we don't hear this at this meeting, it could be heard at the next meeting and done in time for that presentation. Is that correct?
It could be. I will ask the council's indulgence that hearing this item today would not preclude the council from bringing it back. This item will have to come back whether it's heard this evening or later. It is really a two, two council meeting item. This item that's before you later on the agenda is to introduce what the, what the city is doing currently on homeless efforts, share the city attorney's analysis of the Grants Pass decision, and also a brief background on the Functional Zero effort. Any feedback council has would require us to bring that back to you at a later date. So I do ask that you consider this this evening.
However, the way it's written up, we could make a determination today to enter that program, and it would be available when that presentation happens. So if it was delayed to the next meeting, it wouldn't jeopardize that.
You would actually have to hear the item to take up that particular matter. You could table the substance of the item and only address the Functional Zero, should the council majority wish to do that.
Okay, well, I'd like to hear from the other council members. My inclination is to not jump on it because the public hasn't been notified and, you know, the urgency, but any others want to chime in on? Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, yeah?
I have a couple of quick questions. Madam City Manager, there will be a full presentation tonight.
Right. So that not only we can hear that, but the public will be able to gather all the information
Correct.
this evening? And it is definitely a two-meeting item. In other words, whatever we do tonight will only be informational only so that we can all get a good handle on this, but it will definitely have to come back for more discussion?
Yes.
And a vote at another meeting, which will still be in time for the end of the month. Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Massey?
Mr. Mayor, I'm supportive of including it on tonight's agenda. I think the problem is a longstanding one, has evolved over many years, but it is a constantly urgent matter. So I think it certainly meets the threshold of consideration under the circumstances.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This was brought up at a future agenda item for September 10th. This is not something that staff was driving necessarily. This is from the council, so I feel comfortable with this before us tonight, knowing that it's a two-part agenda item.
Okay, great. And of course, if there's any segments of the agenda that we feel we need to table till the next meeting, we certainly can do that, right? If, if we have that ability to do that, so. Any other comments regarding that? Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before we
Sure.
get to a motion on the merits, item 11C, I, I understand that there's a proclamation that's been proposed that the council hasn't discussed, and I understand that there may be two versions of it. So I don't know if now is the time that we want to take that up, or whether we want to do it when item 11C comes up on the agenda.
We could do that right now if that's in order. Mr. City Attorney, is that acceptable to?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. So, yeah, we, I want to thank staff for working with myself and Mayor Pro Tem and, and coming up with a proclamation for World Peace Month. And we do have two versions. The only difference is the last section, there's a little different wording in one section and the other. Shall I, you want me to read both and?
In a moment. Perhaps we consider that, but the, the first question I have is, there's an International Day of Peace every year on September 21st, which is recognized around the world by the United Nations and so on. To the extent that we are proposing to proclaim World Peace Month, who is the sponsor of that? What other governmental entities recognize World Peace Month? I'm just trying to understand whether or not we want to try to proclaim a month with a particular theme, or whether we want to somehow acknowledge the importance of World Peace in another way.
I guess my, my thoughts on it was that I did some research and found out that World Peace Day is October 2nd, and then others have called it World Peace Month. So I didn't know, I wasn't prepared to pull that up, but that's what I found when I did the search, that there's a World Peace Day, and then World Peace Month is, goes along with day because we've already passed October 2nd, so. And, and, you know, because of the recent turmoil in the world, I just thought it, I, Mayor Pro Tem and myself thought it was a good idea to recognize World Peace Month to just promote unity and understanding amongst nations and promoting peace. So that was the intent of it.
Well, certainly, my objection is not any of the, the values underlying it. The concern I have is there are a ton of recognized events, days, weeks, months, for various causes, to remind people to be aware of various things.
Right.
I'm not clear who is the sponsor of World Peace Month. I was unable to find any information in an online search about it. So I'm concerned, there is enough on our calendar for us to recognize during proclamations as we go through the year. Adding events or months on an ad hoc basis like this, especially out of cycle, a month after we had international, the International Day of Peace, is a concern of mine. It's not, you know, the underlying statements of values, because these are all things that we hold dear. It is the commemoration of a month that I don't think is widely recognized. So who is it who sponsors World Peace Month?
There is no one. We're not presenting this proclamation to any organization or any person, but, you know, and I'll, I'll have Mayor Pro Tem jump in. We just thought that it was very relevant for the anniversary of recent events that have occurred, and we wanted to promote long-lasting peace. And so that was the intent of doing it. I suppose if three council members want to put it on the agenda next month, we can take up the two versions and, and do it that way, if that's the desire of the council. Mayor Pro Tem, you have any comments on that? Okay.
All right. I'm going to invite the other council members to weigh in on this in a second, but let me then get to the second point, the, the two versions. We unite in our country around various events that are historical, that were attacks in our country. So Pearl Harbor Day, 9/11, and so forth. We are all aware of what has been happening in the Middle East, and how difficult that issue is, and how strongly felt the opinions are on both sides of that issue. We have largely, in our own comments as individual council members, acknowledged those events as we see fit, as is each of our prerogative. But as a municipal government, we have, I believe, stayed clear of involving ourselves in the matter because foreign relations is a matter for the Department of State and for the federal government. So I am not supportive of changing that by wading in, in any way, directly or indirectly, on the events that are happening in the Middle East and that have happened over the past year plus. With that, let me yield the mic and turn it over to any of my other colleagues who wish to comment on this. So I'm, you know, just to summarize, I do have a concern about commemorating World Peace Month because I don't think it's widely recognized, and I think there are other ways for us to commemorate our commitment to world peace that are better and more in line with our peer governments. And I'm particularly concerned about that one topic that I just mentioned.
And, and just for clarification, neither of the two versions identified at all the events of October 7th, and one was more general than the other, probably. That was the difference between Mayor Pro Tem's version and my version, and that's why we have two versions. But I believe, Mayor Pro Tem, you wanted to?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I concur with pretty much everything that Councilman Massey just said. The difference between version one and version two is pretty much one word toward the end of it, is the word ceasefire. I believe that that is political. It's, it's worldwide politics, and it has no place in this particular proclamation. I think this proclamation is the, is actually the, we're proclaiming World Peace Month in Hermosa Beach, not nationwide, city, worldwide, or anything. It's, it's just a proclamation, a proclamation of world peace and the promotion of world peace within our own city. And so for that reason, I think just any references to military advice or political advice, cease firing and so on and so forth, is not what we should be doing here. We should be promoting world peace, period. And that's why there are two versions, and that's, the version A does not have that word in it. I think that's somewhat divisive in itself. And so that's the only thing I have with, with, a problem I have with this. It is basically, I think it's a good idea, and I don't mind having the proclamation with that one caveat. Other than that, I think it'd be fine.
And that was your version, and the difference was, yeah, that was the difference. So, thank you. Councilmember?
I haven't seen the two versions, so I'm pretty.
Well, should I, shall I read it?
No.
Okay. Where, where do you want to go from here? We typically don't vote on proclamations, they're usually just done, but, you know, whatever the prerogative of the City Council is regarding this.
Correct. Oh, go ahead.
Sure, I'm sorry. What is the normal procedure for this? We do have proclamations from time to time. Where do they come from? Does someone on staff just decide it's a great idea, or is it suggested by some organization? I don't know. This one, I think, came largely from the mayor, and, and I have no problem with that. It's just, if even some of us haven't even heard it yet, then it's maybe a little premature to continue much farther on this. We should perhaps circulate it among council and get some feedback, and we can always do it at our next meeting. October is, we're at the beginning of October, not the end, so there's plenty of time to do that. Only as a suggestion, if everyone else concurs that that's not a bad idea, then I would suggest we do that.
Well, to the extent that I can help, notwithstanding my reservations about creating observances without any precedent, or without a request from some part of our community, I won't object to version A if there's a majority of council who wants to go forward and proclaim October 2024 as World Peace Month in the city of Hermosa Beach.
Okay. Along with version A, if that's acceptable, yes, Councilmember?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I, I haven't seen version A or B, and I have no idea what World Peace Month is, so I am ill-equipped to opine. So to the extent we have further discussions, I think those should be moved to the right of the calendar. Not something we should be doing tonight. Not something we should be doing tonight.
I guess this is not really an agenda item, we'll just, we can consent to just move it to the next agenda item then? Without objection, we'll do that?
Well, so we also do need to approve the agenda. That's the item that we're on, we are on.
Right, that's where we are.
And so if we're going to kick 11C, I guess, I would advise you just do it right now, so it's clear.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda with the subtraction of item 11C, and I believe it was, and the addition of, I believe it was 17?
17D.
D?
And remove 17A.
And removal of 17A.
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, could we have roll call?
I didn't grab the second.
Councilmember.
Madam Clerk, by the way, Councilmember Jackson, his computer is not working, so we may need to do roll call votes until he's reconnected to the system if we're going to do digital voting.
Voting is now open.
Wait, but so hang on, so Councilmember Jackson's computer, we're having some tech issues with the new voting, so Mr. Mayor, if just, we're going to work on this, if just for this item, is it okay if we do the normal voice roll call vote?
Yes, that's fine. We'll do a voice, a normal roll call.
Councilmember Massey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Detoy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sammon?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Looks like the motion carried.
Yes, motion carries.
I guess you put it up on the screen anyway. What we'll do is, we'll just forget Escrib for now, we'll do a roll call until Councilmember Jackson's computer's working, then we'll go back to Escrib, okay?
Yes.
Does that sound more logical for that? Okay, moving along, what's our next item?
Next, we have Proclamations Presentations, item 11A, Women's Club Pancake Breakfast Presentation.
I'd like to invite the Women's Club representatives to speak. Thank you for attending this evening.
Thank you for having us.
Wow, huh? All right.
Our littlest member has joined us, too. I'm Mindy Lagos, I'm president of the Hermosa Beach Women's Club, thanks for having us today. As you can see from some of the shirts our ladies are wearing, we love pancakes. So we'd like to issue a formal invitation to you all to participate and enjoy our Pancake Breakfast fundraiser, which is being held on October 27th at the Kiwanis Hall. It's our biggest fundraiser of the year, I know many of you have participated in the past. And it's a great event, we have, tickets are $15, and kids under five eat free. We also have a huge silent auction. A lot of the money that's raised goes to Hermosa schools and scholarships for Hermosa students. So we'd love to have you there. I know some of you, I think, have volunteered to cook for us. Show of hands. Yay, thank you.
Okay, a lot of fun.
And that's it, we'd love for you and everyone in the community to attend and support the Women's Club of Hermosa Beach and our great causes. Anyone have any questions? Great, hope to see you there, and Jan gave you all your own invites and some maple syrup, so you can use it at the breakfast.
Beautiful.
I'm hungry.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. Thanks for coming. Oh, what was the date of that pancake breakfast now?
October 27th.
October 27th, okay, we got it here, make sure people know that. There we are, October 27th, and that's in the Kiwanis Club. Okay, next we have a proclamation declaring October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and October 13th as Matalistic Breast Cancer Awareness Day. So I invite Dana Richards to the podium to speak about Bretness Breast Cancer Awareness. Hi, thank you.
Hi, this is year three, thank you guys for having me. I am a 14-year survivor, I was diagnosed at 35, so very happy to be here. I wanted to thank Hermosa Beach City Council and the mayor for this breast cancer proclamation three years running, and for those beautiful pink lights we have on Pier Plaza and what they represent, and we just have to remind everyone what it does represent. It represents the charitable goodness of all of you, of this community when we come together, of those butterflies, that's what I call my girls going through it, all the ones who have been touched, all the family members. A lot of them I found through Hermosa. We have a lot of butterflies in Hermosa, so we have to remember that, all ages. And if it can happen to me at 35, it can happen to anyone. So what I really want to talk about very quickly is vigilance, and the wristbands, they say be fearless, being fearless doesn't mean you're not afraid. You could be afraid, but do it scared. Make the mammogram appointment, I'll go with you, you know, I'll hold your hand. If we don't catch it 14 years ago, I'm not here right now. And I don't think, I can't, I can't overstate the importance of advocating for your own health. This is one of those things, we live in this country where we have access to medical care, and to treatment, and to scans. So please, please be vigilant, be fearless, meaning do it scared, take a friend, make a mammogram appointment. If I can just say one thing, if you catch it early, you have a 99% survival rate. I like those odds a lot, okay? And if it was your sister, or your mother, or your daughter, you would be like, get yourself in there, I'll go with you. So tonight, I just wanted to implore Hermosa Beach and the South Bay community to honor and respect what that pink ribbon really means, and it's the charitable goodness of all of you in our community, and to please, please be vigilant, and I am very grateful for every breath. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and stay up there, I have a little proclamation for you. Got the mic working, there we are. So I'm just going to try to briefly read this proclamation, it's actually written out, but you know, it explains it in detail here. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and during this time, we re-educate ourselves to supporting patients and their families, boasting access to care and raising awareness about the life-saving importance of early screening. And there are more than 4 million breast cancer survivors in America today. You're one of them. Good going. And this year alone, hundreds of thousands more will be diagnosed. And the pink ribbon represents the courage to fight breast cancer, hope for the future, and the charitable goodness of people and businesses who publicly support the breast cancer movement. And metastatic, did I say that right?
Metastatic.
Metastatic.
That's stage four.
Okay, metastatic breast cancer occurs when breast cancer spreads to other parts of the body, including the bones, lungs, liver, and brain. And there is a national light-up MBC campaign on October 13th every year to illustrate landmarks in the metast-
Metastatic.
Metastatic.
It's a tough one.
Colors of teal, pink, and green throughout the world, bringing awareness to the disease and to honor the daily number of lives lost to MBC. And we honor all those we have lost to this terrible disease, and celebrate the courageous survivors and advocates fighting to beat it, along with the loved ones and medical providers who have their backs every day. Now, therefore, I, Dean Francois, mayor of the city of Hermosa Beach, do hereby recognize October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and October 13, 2024, as National Metas-
Metastatic.
Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day. The city is proud to join the fight to end cancer by lighting up Pier Plaza in pink for the month of October, and lighting up in teal, pink, and green on October 13th. I encourage citizens, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and other interested groups to join in activities that will increase awareness of what Americans can do to prevent and control breast cancer, and pay tribute to those who have lost their lives to this disease dated October 8, 2024.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, what do we have next on our agenda?
Next, we have item 12, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I want to wish everyone a good evening. It's my pleasure to begin our meeting tonight by welcoming a new member to the Hermosa Beach team and announcing the promotion of another. Joining the team is Laney Wilson, who now serves as Associate Engineer in our Public Works Department. Laney, who was unable to join us this evening, is already hard at work helping our engineering team advance capital improvement projects. Laney shared that as an avid surfer and passionate engineer, she is thrilled to contribute to the best little beach city. We welcome Laney to the Hermosa Beach team. I'm also pleased to announce the promotion of Jake Whitney to Associate Planner in our Community Development Department. Since joining us over a year and a half ago as an Assistant Planner, Jake has tackled a number of important city projects, including assisting local restaurants in obtaining licenses, enforcing post-COVID outdoor dining guidelines, helping update our zoning code, and much more. We are grateful that Jake is choosing to continue to grow his career here in Hermosa Beach, and we know he will continue to do great things on behalf of the community. Congratulations, Jake. On a more somber note, we reluctantly announce that Carrie Ty will be leaving her position of Community Development Director effective October 15th to relocate to Orange County for family reasons. Since joining the city in January 2023, Carrie has been instrumental in leading the city's Community Development Department, including leading the city's housing element revision and state certification, spearheading zoning updates that included the city's land value recapture program, and assisting in updating the city's parking permit and administrative citation programs, among numerous other accomplishments. We will miss Carrie and wish her well in her future endeavors, and the city has already started recruitment for a new Community Development Director. Now I'd like to share a few upcoming events and important reminders for the community. For this upcoming Monday, October 14th, the city will host a groundbreaking ceremony beginning at 4:30 PM to celebrate the start of the Green Belt Pedestrian Trail Project. The project is intended to improve the accessibility and safety of the city's green belt by installing a decomposed granite path and other improvements that will make it easier for people with mobility issues to navigate. This groundbreaking event will take place on the Green Belt Trail near the intersection of Valley Drive and Pier Avenue, which is right by the city's 9/11 memorial. An ADA-accessible path will be made available for the event. Next, a joint meeting of the Parks and Recreation and Public Works Commissions will be held on Tuesday, October 9th at 6:00 PM, to present the Park's master plan, which will help guide the direction and development of our city's recreation spaces and facilities for the next 30 years. The agenda with participation details will be posted on the city's Agendas, Minutes, and Video page at least 72 hours in advance, and members of the public are welcome to attend and submit questions. Finally, we would also like to provide folks with a friendly reminder that we are in the midst of National Fire Prevention Week, which is celebrated throughout North America every October, and will continue until October 12th. Smoke alarms, make them work for you, is the theme this year. The campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. For information, please visit our Los Angeles County Fire Department's website at fire.lacounty.gov. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to Public Works Director Joe San Clemente to provide updates on a few active and upcoming capital improvement projects in addition to operations and maintenance activities. Joe?
Thank you, Madam City Manager, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council. Happy to share a few updates from the Public Works Department this evening. First, I'd like to highlight the Clark Building renovation. Last Wednesday evening, we had the renovation launch celebration in the building. I think we had a pretty great turnout last night, or last week. Residents were able to come and ask questions about the Project C renderings, meet the contractor and our engineering team. And so we are very excited that the official start date for construction was yesterday, Monday. Our abatement team started moving in from the contractor today, these pictures are from today. The initial abatement work's going to go throughout the 30th of the month. They have to do lead and asbestos remediation before the main contractor can get in there and start demolition and work on the other work. So here's the first picture to come with the progress update, and more to come. Moving on to the Green Belt Pedestrian Trail, as Madam City Manager noted earlier, we'll be having the groundbreaking ceremony on Monday. It is also the official start date of construction for that project that will last through the end of the year, early into the new calendar year. The Green Belt will be closed for the duration. This is just from Pier Avenue to 8th Street, so that the contractor has all the room that they need to do the work. There will be pedestrian detours in place on Valley, and more around that zone. We will maintain the southern sidewalk and Pier Avenue where the bus stop is, but we do need to have that closure in place. The team is also going to be working closely to coordinate construction schedules with Green Belt, as well as the Clark renovation, and then the eventual resurfacing project that's going to come down Valley Drive later, later on. So we work on coordinating those efforts and providing updates as they come available. Moving on to annual storm drain improvements, this is Green Belt and the 5th Street, just further down the road. I've been highlighting that this work started on September 30th. Part of the work is connecting the new storm drain line into the county line. We had tried to maintain two-way access on Valley Drive, but we do have to implement a full closure on Valley. That's going to continue through at least Thursday, and that's just for overall safety, and so they can get the necessary equipment in there to make that connection. But we've scheduled that with a contractor to minimize the disruption during school drop-off and pickup hours, so it's nine to two. So that's, hopefully, be wrapped up this week, but the overall project's going to continue through November or December. Civic Center charging stations, CIP 617, we've been working for some time in coordination with SCE to install 20 Level 2 chargers. This is to help our growing electric fleet. These chargers would be installed on Bard Street behind City Hall. We have initiated Phase 1 with Edison, they're scheduled to install the transformer on Bard Street behind City Hall next week. Work will take about a week to do, a week and a half, and then there's a couple other components, there's actually three different contractors involved. Once the transformer's in, another contractor comes in and installs the conduit, and then the final phase is the installation of the chargers by a third contractor. So we're working on scheduling that and working out the dates as they come available, but construction is finally underway. Lot C garage update, the CIP has been a full detailed assessment of the structural condition of the garage, and working to address high-priority structural updates, as well as the elevator modernization. You may remember, but back in late summertime, we had done some additional structural destructive testing to further flesh out all the repair needs and help further update the design plans. Those are underway, we're hoping to be able to get that design package out to bid in about one to two months. But in the meantime, we have split off the elevator modernization effort. That's largely due to long lead times for ordering the elevator doors, because we are going to get replacement doors as part of that modernization effort. That package was advertised on the 3rd, and we're looking to get bids at the end of the month, with the goal of the, by the time we get the structural contractor in there, that we can align all these efforts at the same time for full structural improvements in elevator repair. We had given an update a couple weeks ago about Cal Water's work to do water main replacement on Bayview Drive. This work is- This work is from Second Street to Eighth Street. The first phase of construction started yesterday. They're going to be doing a couple blocks at a time, so right now the most impacted area is Second Street to Fourth Street as they trench, install the new line, and then do a replacement, but they're going to try to do a couple blocks at a time. We're working close coordination with Cal Water and notifications so the most directly impacted residents while we do that work. There will be road closures on those segments as we leapfrog through the overall length of Bayview to complete that. And then eventually, at the end of the project, there will be pavement restoration at the end, but we'll continue to provide updates on that project as it works and reach out with adjacent residents as we work through the effort. I want to highlight some of the regular maintenance activities that our operations team is doing. It is annual tree trimming season, so you'll see crews out. This is down on the beach, but this typically starts around October, it could last two to three months in advance of the winter season. Minimal traffic impacts, they move pretty quickly, but this is something that will be happening on all the city-owned trees, especially the downtown, so there could be some short-term parking impacts as we move through different areas. We're also wrapping up quarterly storm drain cleaning. This is something that's done four times a year, and we have initiated annual sewer cleaning, and that's citywide. That involves hydrojetting the lines, as well as doing camera inspections, we do it once a year to help inform whether there are issues or we have to do additional cleanings of line or help inform future repair projects. But that's underway. There might be some intermittent traveling impacts or noises or smells. If you have any concerns, definitely reach out to the department, and we can work with our contractor to mitigate any impacts that you might be experiencing. I wanted to highlight the locale 9254 event that happened two weekends ago. I want to give a kind of behind-the-scenes picture of one of the support efforts that our engineering team does for all the large-scale events. For this one, we work closely with the Chamber, Police and Fire, and the Community Resources Team, where our engineers help oversee where the deployment of barriers and gates are and also inspect them in the field. This is a photo from 3:00 in the morning where we had our engineers out, working with the traffic control company to place each barrier, ensure that they are proper placement and spacing, and that they're filled properly with water, or before they're filled with water, that they're in the right spot. But it's one thing that we do kind of behind the scenes to help make sure that our events are safe. And finally, I want to touch on East Runaway Park improvements. Our team has been working on a beautification enhancement project there. We had temporarily closed the park so that the fencing could be replaced. The park is now open, the fencing is complete. We had to replace some of the gates, and we repainted all the walls. There's a fair amount of patching that we need to do on the retaining walls around the perimeter and repainting of the posts for the gates. And the team also took down the sign on the corner and completely refurbished it and rehung it. So the park is now fully open. There's a couple additional improvements coming. We're replacing some of the basketball hoops, and we're going to be wrapping some of the backboards, so those are coming soon, but we're nearing the end of those improvements, so we appreciate everyone's patience while we work on those efforts. And with that, that concludes my presentation tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. San Clemente? Mayor Pro Tem?
Just one quick one. Joe, thank you for your report. The repairs or the upgrade to the elevator, Lot C, I know you mentioned the doors, of course. Are we going to be replacing the basic mechanism itself with, is it hydraulic now, and will we be replacing it with a chain-driven or screwdriver, some other lift system?
All the mechanical components are getting replaced. We're refurbishing the inside, and all the doors have to get replaced, but this is a complete refurbishment of that elevator facility.
So then the mechanism will change or stay the same or just get rebuilt?
My understanding is it's all new parts that are going in there. We're trying to save, I mean, the overall structure, but we're really trying to change out the guts that are in there to make sure that it works and that it have a better looking and feeling elevator.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. San Clemente. And now we have Police Chief La Barron. Thank you for coming this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Francois, Mayor Pro Tem, Seaman, members of City Council. I wouldn't miss it, partly by choice and partly because I'm usually here. Tonight, I want to share some interesting examples of how the skills and the talents of our employees have created positive outcomes that would otherwise likely go unnoticed. So in police work, we often focus on data to drive our decisions, and data is typically based off of things that happen that we can look back at and say, let's react to that. Unfortunately, we have not yet figured out a way to measure the things that don't happen, but this is something that has a big impact on our city and our community in terms of money saved, lives protected, and safety that is generated. So let me start with a call our officers received last Thursday in the morning. The initial call came from an employee of a business on Pacific Coast Highway. The business was closed, but the employee was able to see inside the business with the help from some cameras that they had installed, and the cameras led the employee to believe that somebody was inside of the business without permission. Officers responded, and they immediately set up a perimeter. We deployed our drone, and we established communication with the business owner, who was not on scene. Based off the information that was shared with officers, they were able to establish that there was movement inside the business and when it was and where it was coming from. Officers and the supervisors on scene developed a plan for entry that included contingencies for anything that might happen that they could even think of. This is in thanks part to the unique talents that many of our officers and our supervisors possess, talents such as tactical skills from the training that some of our officers attend, critical incident management that our supervisors are trained in, drone operations, technology competencies through investigations, and community relations where relationships are established beforehand so that when we need to work with people, there's already a level of trust built. Officers were able to use their prior relationships with the business owner to obtain important information that allowed them to know the details about what was happening in the business, and they were able to form a legal basis that justified them entering the business and searching for a possible suspect. The officers using, the officers that are trained in tactical skills stepped up and formed a plan that included the use of less lethal options in case they were necessary, as well as other possible responses to any suspects that were encountered. Our supervisors, who are at the location, manage the entry team, manage communication to the surrounding businesses, and also manage traffic control efficiently with the community-first mindset. Our drone and our technology team were unseen. They were able to use all of their available resources to ensure we had maximum information and coverage of the building before taking any steps to enter the business. Ultimately, the officers were able to enter the business, and as expected, they found a suspect inside who tried to hide under a trashcan. That suspect was taken into custody safely, and the District Attorney's Office just filed felony commercial burglary charges against that suspect, and they're being held in LA County custody. So what's the moral of the story? It's not so much what happened, even though it was a great result and great work by our officers, but it's more about what didn't happen. When our officers receive calls about possible break-ins to a business and many other types of calls like this, it can be very difficult to handle them because we can't just walk away. We have to do something, but sometimes the information is limited. So a lot of times, based on limited information, we don't know whether someone's inside or had been inside, or if this was just possibly based off of a witness statement that could be in error. We can't ignore that information, but we also need to be sure we have good information if we're going to enter and search for a suspect many times with our guns drawn. These searches are dangerous for our officers, as well as anyone who's inside who might be encountered. Options to handle a call like this might include making entry with the assumption that there might be an armed and dangerous person inside, and that officers then would search without any specific information, but having their guns drawn, which elevates the potential for an officer-involved shooting or a surprise encounter with a dangerous suspect. The second potential option would be surrounding the business and calling for anyone to come in from outside. If nobody comes in, comes out, and we don't have a reason to go in because we don't have legitimate information, we might have to walk away, which ultimately means somebody may have never been caught who was inside a business. Or we could have called SWAT if we knew someone was in there, using tactical plan to enter the building and search. This leads to a long shutdown of Pacific Coast Highway, impacts the neighboring businesses, evacuates surrounding residences, costs a lot of money because of the resources deployed, and a significant impact to everybody who might be involved. So we always consider every option, and we never hesitate to use what's most appropriate and safest to handle the information we have. But in this case, none of those things happened. We weren't, we didn't need to do any of them. We eliminated the potential for a negative, dangerous, and costly outcome because of the training, the experience, and the skills brought to that scene. Our relationship with the business owner, our tactical training, our technology, and our leadership contributed to a plan that affected a quick, safe, and positive outcome with minimal impact to our community, resulting in a safer city. I share this because we appreciate the ongoing support that we have from our community, our City Council, each of you, and our City Manager. That includes funding for valuable training that our officers and supervisors are sent to, and the equipment that we use every single day. So I wanted to be sure our community is aware that the majority of our calls result in positive outcomes, but that should never be taken for granted. If it weren't for our people, our resources, and your support, a different conversation would be, would possibly be happening. And the last thing I want to talk about is an ongoing topic of interest, and that is the Police Department's response to the unhoused. And I want to bring this up because there's been some recent incidents that I think highlight some of the efforts being made, and once again, the fact that we don't measure what never happens with some good work that's happening. I want to distinguish the difference with our Police Department and responses to calls that we would consider nuisance-type activity or a call that would be a police response for public safety. When we receive a call related to a nuisance, our officers do respond, and they seek a resolution based on an approach that seeks care before enforcement. We know that enforcing our way to a solution on quality-of-life crimes is not possible. We do work closely with our many partners to bring resources to those that are chronically unhoused. We also use the homeless court as a resource to blend the need for accountability with quality-of-life crimes, as well as seek the ultimate goal of a permanent housing and providing resources to those that need it. Just two weeks ago, our officers were dispatched to a couple who was scavenging and picking through trashcans in our city. When officers contacted the individuals, they immediately called for the support of our HB Cares team, who responded, and the couple and their child were open to talking to them and receiving services. Those services were provided, and the couple was placed into housing and are no longer in our city, and that included their infant that was with them. This is just one example of many successes we see with the collaborative approach. Now, when a call is received that is a threat to public safety, whether they're housed, unhoused, anybody at all, we respond the same way, and that is with a public safety-first approach. That means that our officers will investigate the crime, and if possible, they will enforce the law to the maximum extent possible. Our detectives have identified several people recently who are experiencing homelessness that have shown a potential threat to our public safety. We've enforced the law against them in the past. We will continue to do so, and we're going to remain proactive in monitoring any criminal activity, including from these people, and officers will do whatever they can to intervene through the use of the legal system. Some of the things that we're doing that I want to make sure our community knows about, we are using resources such as seeking stay-away orders from the downtown area when the crimes are being committed in that area, and those are court-ordered stay-away orders. We're seeking court-ordered restraining orders when specific individuals are being targeted and need protection. We're making arrests if the subjects have outstanding warrants. We're seeking new criminal charges when crimes are committed, and that includes filing the cases with maximum charges allowed by law through our city prosecutor and District Attorney's Office. And in the cases where they would be eligible for being released right away, if appropriate, we will seek magistrate review on those cases, and a judge can determine whether they pose a threat where they should be kept in jail. And many times, a judge agrees with our officers that this person, based on their record, should not be released, and we're able to hold them and keep them from going back out onto the street. In short, our officers are taking these issues seriously. They've done excellent work to increase the safety of our city, and much like my previous example, it's important to be aware of the work being done because we can't measure what never happened when we're all looking at things through the, and measuring the things that we only see. Our city is safer from the work being done, and we are committed to doing more towards a safe city. So Mayor Francois, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for everything you and your department and officers are doing to keep our community safe. Thank you. Comments? Any questions from my colleagues? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Madam City Manager? I have one, if I could. There was a comment that was submitted regarding the installation of the green meters or the meters in green zones. I guess they were originally free 24-hour, and they were turned into meters. Why don't you just explain a little bit what happened with those and the notification that went to the public and the businesses, and about how many of these spaces were changed, if you could?
Thank you, Mayor Francois. So the green meters are, I believe, approximately 15 meters that we have, and we are updating, based on the comment that we received, which was a great suggestion, we're updating our website to show a map of where these meters are. Previously, they were un-metered, but still limited in time. And what we find, not just in our city, but really universally, is that those spaces do not turn over, and in a business district, it is important to have spaces that turn over so that people can patronize businesses that are there. And so it's an effective strategy to implement a hard stop that is metered, and so that is why those spaces were converted to the 24-minute meter. So it's still long enough to run quick errands, and then there are other options nearby for folks who need longer than 24 minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. And there were no two-hour meters that were reduced to 24, correct? These are just green zones that were free that were just implemented with meters?
Correct. I will double-check that, but absolutely, that's been the discussions as always to convert the green, the 15-minute zones previously to the 24-minute meter.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything? Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Manager. What's next on our agenda, Madam City Clerk?
Next, we have Item 13, Public Comment. This is a time for members of the public to address the City Council on items on and not on the agenda but within the council's jurisdiction. Each speaker is limited to two minutes and will be taken in person only. A total of 30 minutes will be allocated for this comment period. As a reminder, another public comment period will be provided at the end of the meeting, reserved for those whose comments could not be heard during this first public comment opportunity. And we did pull the speaker cards where an item was identified, so we will call those individuals when the item is heard unless they decide to come up to the podium. And first, we do have Sarah Harper.
Just, I want to just make a quick, just a brief comment that recent meetings have shown depth and passion, that the commitment of our community members have had. If we move forward, I just encourage everyone to channel that energy into respectful and focused dialogue and keep our comments civil and relevant to City Council business and free from personal remarks and attacks, and thank you very much. So we have Sarah Harper first, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
So we'll go ahead and move forward with Brian Sheel.
Good evening, Madam City Manager, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Francois, and City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Brian Sheel. I am running for Hermosa Beach City Council, and I'm not going to just run through my candidate statement. I want to engage with the community and say hello, and if you want to hear my thoughts and positions, you can find it at bryansheel.com. We are all neighbors here, and I feel like we are all friends. I have some new friends, I have some longtime friends on the council, and I know after this campaign, we're still going to be friends. It's okay, even we can disagree on different items. I encourage the public to visit my website and communicate with me. Personally, I'm opposed to the tax increases that are on the ballot, both county and city tax increases. I feel that our city budget has expanded too fast. I think that the, we spent $100,000 on the Fullerton Consulting Proposal for the Civic Facilities. When our city staff has also increased in the, in the recent years, and also in 2025, we have another proposed 23 new full-time positions that are unfunded. another proposed 23 new full-time positions that are unfunded. I feel like the prevailing opinion of the city council with the new taxes being proposed is that there's so much money in this town that we can afford it. Some of us bought our homes here 25, 30 years ago. Some of us want our kids to be able to live here. I love Hermosa Beach. I want my kids to be able to live here, buy a home here without having to sell a kidney. Thank you for letting me speak. Please reach out to me on my website.
Thank you.
Next, we have Trent Larson.
By the way, Madam City Clerk, is there something going on with the screen up there? Anyone know what?
It appears that the television is shadowing, providing a shadow. In fact, we're not really sure what's going on with the television, but the time is still working, the timer's still working.
And have you engaged our computers with the agenda? Because mine's not moving along, and there's no public comment showing on my screen, so I don't know if yours is engaged, but I know we were having problems before. Are we still doing roll call? Are we on now the...back to escribe?
Right now, we're on public comment.
But, I mean, as far as...
Correct. Correct, yeah, Mr. Mayor. So Councilmember Jackson still does not have his computer, so until otherwise noted...
We're going to continue with roll call. But you still engaged us on escribe, right? So as far as everything else goes. Okay. Thanks. I was just trying to clarify what was going on with that. Go ahead, Mr. Larson. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you very much. Well, here we are, Trent's two-minute warning. It's election season, and as a Central Committee Countywide Elected Republican, I remind everybody to vote. You get your ballots in the mail, okay? Super simple. You got your syllabus here, read up on everything. There's a big things going on in Hermosa, not the least of which is the sales tax, and I will comment that government needs to be more efficient in the way it spends money. I know the intentions are good. The people that work at the government are honest and hardworking, but the financial incentives for the government are not there. They're not anywhere near what the private sector is, and I don't know what that long-term solution is, but it's got to change. Now, Dean, you mentioned about respect and the comments and everything, and I just want to say that, you know, I think it's okay for the city council, all of you guys, if you feel like after someone spoke, to say something, as long as it's respectful and you get your feelings out, because I think that's communication, and that's the public square. And recently, I read a book on free speech by Jonathan Turley, which is an excellent book. Talks about the different forms of censorship, and one of them is self-censorship. We kind of do it to ourselves through what's happening now, through, you know, woke agendas and dogmatic people and bashing people down, and so don't let that bother you, but be a good person, you know? Say what you mean, mean what you say, and, you know, don't get carried away, but I think it's okay. Now, I love the fact that we're going to check in on the homeless more. You know, I think that's a big problem for California in general, because if we clean up the homeless problem, and we have one, we can clean up a lot of other social ills. That is the linchpin, and we have to be tough. We need mandatory sheltering and involuntary confinement, and Governor Newsom even knows it, but the others, we have to stomach it. We have to be able to do that. We need that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Ira Elman.
A few months ago, I urged the council to not elect the current mayor due to poor behavior and not representing the city in a dignified manner. Note, being mayor is not trying to use your title to get on every stage, give out every reward, and when you don't get your way, complaining to anyone who will listen at all hours and badgering those who won't listen at all hours. Being mayor is not using your title to get favors at the beer garden and sending friends to verbally abuse those in charge because they can't get in for free. Being mayor is not trying to change city council rules to show off your mayoral power. Note, being mayor is not opining first on all issues during council meeting on issues rather than allowing your colleagues to opine first. Being a mayor is not silencing your fellow council members from speaking, such as you did to Councilmember Jackson. Such censorship has never been seen before in Hermosa Beach. Being a mayor is not abstaining on an issue that you led a long waste of time discussion about communication policy, and then you abstained. A second time you abstained, never gave the reasons for either abstention. We residents deserve that. Being a mayor is not riding your bike on a sidewalk like a third grader, endangering fellow residents. Mayor, clean up your act. Being mayor is not about satisfaction and satisfying your ego. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Nancy.
Good evening. Nancy Schwapack, I live in North Hermosa. I'm asking for some help getting a public records request expedited. I submitted it on September 4th. It's Records Request 24-445. I know there are a lot of priorities, but this specific request asks for spending on private consultants from fiscal year 2016, 2017 to the most recent fiscal year, showing the fiscal year, the department, the vendor-payee, and the amount annually paid to that vendor. I spent a lot of time going through budgets and city council meetings and trying to find this information. It's Object Code 4201, Contract Services Private, but I could not discern a way to pull it out of every department. A reason I'm asking it to be expedited is there's been a lot of discussion in connection with this election about increase in city staff on the one hand, and then increased spending on consultants on the other hand, and I know there's been short staffing. Public Works has been short-staffed, et cetera. However, I think there's a lot of noise about it. Staff levels are easy to find, but how much we spend on private contractors and consultants is not easy to find, and I really do think it's directly relevant to this election sort of one way or another. Maybe the rumors are, or maybe the feelings are true, maybe they're not true, but I'd like to be able to be provided that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sarah Harper.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, residents of Hermosa Beach. I'm just here to make my announcements about upcoming library events. Tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock, we are having our Party Puppet Show for children's age 5 to 12. Join the Party Puppets for a lively show that has puppets, comedy, and music to inspire children's imagination and creativity. Audiences will laugh, sing, and dance with an assortment of performing characters. And then next Wednesday, October 16th, we will be having Scared Silly. Come, make an imaginary monster sandwich, and enjoy a program of not-too-scary stories for the whole family. And then finally, on Saturday, October 19th, we will be having another family concert with Key &amp; Harmony, and that's especially for our ages 0 to 5 and their parents and caregivers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Carolyn Petty.
Mayor and council, I'm very disappointed that I have to come back again tonight instead of hanging out at home because of what happened at the last meeting. Councilmember Jackson, again, your conduct was completely inappropriate, out of control. I asked you to take your placard down. You're not taking it down. So now what it comes down to is the three of you, and this includes Councilmember Detoy. Thank you, Councilmember Seaman, for trying to get things under control. Thank you, Mayor Francois, for trying to get things under control. He clearly will not allow himself to be controlled. He does not abide by decorum. He does whatever he wants, and what this means is Councilmember Detoy, you have to say something tonight. This cannot continue. You cannot have council members demeaning and disparaging people from the dais. You cannot have council members campaigning against somebody running for city council. It is so inappropriate. And by the way, council member comments has got to be removed from the agenda, because right now, you know what Justin Massey is doing? He is waiting to get in the last word during council member comments. You must remove it from the agenda. It is entirely inappropriate. And this is the other thing that's inappropriate. The city clerk, who's so nice, queued up that video. She is now involved in campaigning against a candidate running for city council. You cannot let that go unanswered. All the residents deserve to know the backstory of why she thought it was okay to put up a video for something that had nothing to do with the agenda. Now, I've inquired. I haven't gotten a response. I think we all need to know, was the city manager involved? Did she concur when the city clerk said, "Is it okay if I put up a video that has nothing to do with the agenda?" Things have got to change, and I'm going to ask you to ask Councilmember Jackson to remove his placard, because if all of you had your placards up, the entire dais would be filled with tchotchkes and placards. It's just, again, completely inappropriate. So please, the community deserves to hear from you guys. Councilmember Detoy, you're running for reelection. We need to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any more cards been submitted for speakers tonight?
Mayor, I do not have any other speaker cards for a general public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that did not submit cards and would like to speak? Please step forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Francois, City Council staff, Matt McCool. I want to thank Ms. Petty for her comments. Actually, it'll help me cut mine in half because I want to echo a lot of what you just said. But Mayor Francois, before I begin, I want to go ahead and qualify my comments from an authoritative data source. According to the National Institute of Mental Health, psychosis is defined as a collection of symptoms that affect the mind, where there has been some loss of contact with reality. During an episode of psychosis, a person's thoughts and perceptions are disrupted, and they may have difficulty recognizing what is real and what is not. People with psychosis typically experience delusions, false beliefs, and hallucinations, seeing or hearing things that others do not. Other symptoms can include incoherent, nonsense speech, and behavior that is inappropriate for the situation. Now, this is textbook. These are not my words. I didn't make any of them up, but this is an apt description of Councilman Jackson. To consecutive meetings, he's claimed that I have not just made threats against city council staff, I mean, city staff, but I have a history of making threats against city staff. This is completely delusional. This is someone who's lost touch with reality. Now, having observed Councilman Jackson, I don't believe he's lying. I don't think he thinks he's lying. I think he's completely delusional, and this city council needs to take disciplinary action against him, against disparaging me to the public for what is basically a criminal action. I'll go ahead and close with this. Ms. Petty said to move the tchotchkes and everything. I'll go ahead and add another thing to this for Councilman Jackson. For military man and formal proceedings, you should probably remove your cover. You know a military man never wears a cover indoors. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak this evening? Okay. We will close public comments, and I'll just say that I'm trying my best to run a meeting as business-like as possible and thankful we have rules of decorum and Robert's rules to deal with, and if I'm out of order, three objections of any members of this body can so go forward. Otherwise, I plan to run a business-like meeting. Okay. Any other members wishing to make comments this evening? Okay. No other members. Oh, I have a question on the comment that was made on the public records request. September 4th, is that a usual typical time for complying with requests, or how is that going with public records requests? They've been pretty quick recently, haven't they?
It depends on the request. When someone requests for all contracts and all contract amounts, that's not located in one particular location. That has to be pulled vendor by vendor, and so we do not have the staff capacity to dedicate that amount of time on any given day, so we spread the work out over however long it takes. So that, without looking at it closely, as I'm not directly involved with this, when someone asks for all of something, that is a lot of work, and so it takes time. We do reply within the legal framework, acknowledging the receipt of the public records request, and try to manage expectations from there.
Thank you very much. And if they wanted to inquire more, they could send you an email or send an email to the city council. We could refer it to you, and they could...
They can send an email to the city clerk.
Oh, the city clerk.
It would save several steps, yes.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any members wishing to pull any items on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second. And since we're not up on escribe yet, let's have... Are we on now?
I am up, yes, sir.
We're up on escribe, so Madam City Clerk, please begin voting. Thank you. Okay, the votes are tallied on the screen. Madam City Clerk, could you announce the vote?
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And what is next on our agenda?
We have item 16A, Review of Precise Development Plan, PDP 24-10, approved by the Planning Commission, approved by the Planning Commission on August 20, 2024, to reconstruct a city-owned surface parking lot located at the southwest corner of 14th Street and Manhattan Avenue in the downtown commercial C2 zone.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open, and could we please have a staff report? Thank you.
Sure thing. I believe Planning Manager Alexis Oropesa will be making this presentation. Give me one moment. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Francois, Mayor Protem, Seaman, members of the city council. The item before you is a precise development plan that was called up pursuant to Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Section 2.52040, which enables the city council to call up items acted on by the Planning Commission as a de novo hearing. This item is a request for approval of a precise development plan that would permit the reconstruction of an existing city-owned parking lot to incorporate a variety of storm-water capture and other sustainability features located at the southwest corner of 14th Street and Manhattan Avenue. Staff recommends that the city council approve the requested PDP with conditions of approval and determine that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The city zoning map is displayed on the slide and provides context as to the property's location in relation to the adjacent streets, the zoning districts, and residential uses. The project site, as mentioned, is a corner lot located on the southwest corner of Manhattan 14th and is in the C2 downtown commercial zone and is also within the coastal zone. The property has a general plan land use designation of community commercial. The project consists of the reconstruction of the existing parking lot. The parking lot would consist of 22 parking stalls. That would include 12 regular stalls, five compact stalls, two electric vehicle stalls, and two parking stalls for neighborhood electric vehicles, along with one accessible parking space. The project would also incorporate a new bike rack, a new accessible path of travel from the east side of the property onto Manhattan Avenue, and would replace the existing asphalt pavement with permeable pavement, thus achieving a 100% permeability for the site. The project... The project would also include a new trash enclosure pay station, stormwater infiltration, native vegetation, and a solar canopy. The site would operate 24 hours a day and seven days a week, as it currently does. The project requires approval by the city as well as the California Coastal Commission. The proposed project involves more than 1,500 square feet of construction, which crosses the threshold and requires that approval of a precise development plan. The purpose of the precise development plan is to ensure quality development that aligns with the community's social, economic, and environmental objectives while protecting the surrounding developments. The project, as mentioned, is in the coastal zone and will require approval by the California Coastal Commission as well for the purpose of ensuring consistency with the California Coastal Act. For this application. Let me turn on the pointer. For this application, the city has two roles in processing the application. One is as the applicant property owner, and the second is as the review authority. In terms of the entitlement process, the applicant's responsibility is for the design of the project in conformance with the city's standards and to obtain approvals from the applicable regulatory bodies. The precise development plan review authority starts with the Planning Commission, and their review authority is to evaluate applications based on zoning regulations and findings of fact to establish findings for precise development plans, in this case. And then to take action, whether to approve the project, approve with conditions, or deny an application, all of which must be based on findings of fact. With regards to this parking lot project, it was first conceived in 2017. Later, in June of this year, city council directed staff to proceed with CIP 682, which is the project number assigned to the parking lot project. The Planning Commission is, as mentioned, it was the designated, is the designated review authority for precise development plans. They considered this application at its August 20th meeting of this year. After holding a public hearing, receiving public input, and discussing the matter, the Planning Commission found the applicant, the project met the required findings for approval and adopted Resolution Number 2416, approving the precise development plan, subject to conditions of approval. On September 10th of this year, city council, in its review authority, under Section 2.52040 of the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, acted to call the project up, which brings us to this evening's hearing. The concerns, I want to just quickly go over the concerns that we heard in response to the project were related to the trash enclosure, the grease trap, the parkway tree removal, as well as the unauthorized use of Lot D by the adjacent property owner. These next two slides will provide you with an overview of the existing site as it looks today on the left side of the screen.
I'm sorry, Alexis, for the interruption. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to share with members of the community that may be watching on YouTube that the YouTube function is down at this time. So if you would like to continue watching the meeting, please do so on Zoom. And perhaps we could get a quick message up as well. We'll work on that, but we would like people to join via Zoom.
Thank you. Can we get a message on YouTube channel that would direct people there? Or they wouldn't know that because they can't hear this right now. Is that correct? If they were watching on YouTube right now?
If they were watching on YouTube, they would not know it. We will try and figure out if we could do that. However, people have been communicating to all of us since we are very accessible. So we're receiving emails and messages, and we're letting them know to join via Zoom.
And they can go on Zoom, or they can watch on cable, spectrum. Assuming that's working properly, we've had some issues.
Spectrum is not something that we control, but spectrum has had problems. So Zoom is the better option, as I shared. And if I might also share that the noise that we're hearing in the background is an effort to keep the equipment cool. The way this facility was built, the air conditioning is least available in the room where we have the most equipment, and that's problematic. So we're trying to, that's why the cabinet is open. We are trying to vent that room and also try to minimize the noise by keeping the other door closed. I'm so sorry, Alexis, it's far too much information, I know.
No, that's fine. It's great to let everyone know. And of course, when everything's back in order, people will assume be able to watch it on YouTube straight through without interruptions.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mayor, to that point, I just, should we invite the folks who might be close to that fan? If they are having trouble hearing, they can move up or move to the other side. So if anybody's having trouble hearing what's going on because of the fan noise, feel free to move up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam City Clerk, it's often freezing cold in here. Is there a possibility of turning the air conditioning up?
So we had a, we had a power surge, and we believe that might be why the air conditioning is not keeping up with the instruction that we provided to the thermostat. So we are working on it at all angles. We, we have lots of folks trying to work on that. But we did have a power surge, yes.
All in all, a really great technical evening, I guess.
You know what, though? We have a scrappy team. They're making it work. So that's the upside.
There you go. Okay, thank you. You can continue and back up for a few minutes if you need to and continue on. Thanks.
Thank you. So the slide before you provides a depiction of the site as it exists to date. The left photo provides a view looking west from Manhattan Avenue. And then the photo on the right provides a view from the alley looking towards the east. The site today has 19 parking stalls, and the landscaping on site consists of approximately 612 square feet with approximately 8,100 square feet of impermeable surface. This image provides a site plan view of the project site. The project would include egress from 14th Street as well as access, vehicle access on the alley. The project includes the installation, as mentioned, of a new bike rack, trash enclosure, and the solar canopy, which is highlighted, shaded in orange. The slight slopes downward from the east to the west with an approximately 11-foot variation in the property between Manhattan Avenue and the low point along the alley. Both the trash enclosure and the solar canopy are located on the lower grade of the property as compared to the rest of the site and would not obstruct a views from Manhattan Avenue. The project landscaping would revitalize the site with native species. As mentioned, the proposed project was called up for review, and in the next couple of slides, we'll just provide a closer look at the concerns that were raised and the responses that the applicant has provided. So with regards to the trash enclosure, there was concerns really raised regarding who benefits from the trash enclosure as well as the short and long-term plans for managing trash of the adjacent businesses, and then concerns about who would bear the cost. The applicant has indicated they would, they are working with the adjacent property owners to develop a long-term trash collection and storage solution. In addition, the construction management plan will account for trash collection during construction. With regards to the grease trap, the applicant has confirmed that no grease, excuse me, no grease storage is proposed as part of the project and that all the businesses currently manage grease collection internally through under sink grease trap, traps, or in separate containers. With regards to the concerns of tree removal, the applicant has indicated that the trees must be removed to facilitate the demolition of concrete and pavement to make way for the new planter areas. The five existing trees are all less than the 12-inch diameter and so therefore aren't subject to hearing requirements of the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code. The project, as mentioned, does include installation of new drought tolerant plants along with five new trees, which would be selected from the city's approved parkway tree list. With regards to the residential gate, the applicant has indicated that no easement is proposed as part of the project. The adjacent property owner was informed, actually in 2018, about this project. A follow-up letter was sent in August of this year. And in addition, as the, the gate itself is unpermitted, an unpermitted part of the private property, code enforcement has issued a notice of violation regarding the gate in last month. So the project, as mentioned, requires a precise development plan for the reconstruction of the site. The resulting reconfiguration would add three parking spaces along with sustainability features. Impacts from the project are transitory in nature and related to the construction, and conditions of approval have been recommended for reducing those impacts. Although the parking does not include any buildings, several accessory structures are proposed for the site. The following, the table on the screen provides a summary of the C2 downtown commercial development standards that the project must adhere to. The project as proposed is fully compliant with the development standards within the C2 zone. The project has been thoroughly evaluated for performance with the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code standards for precise development plans as identified in the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code and is discussed in greater detail in the draft resolution included in the packet. There are 10 findings of approval, all of which could affirmably be made to support the application. The project was also evaluated for consistency with the city's general plan, Plan Hermosa, and implements a number of goals and policies from the plan, including Policy 71 for permeable pavement, Policy 6.6 for universal access. The project was further evaluated for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA. The proposed project qualifies for Class 11 categorical exemption for accessory structures. Moreover, none of the exceptions to the categorical exemption apply. For the city council meeting tonight, the hearing was duly noticed in accordance with the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, including mailers, poster on site, and publication in the newspaper. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution determining that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA and approving PDP 2410 for the reconstruction of an existing city-owned surface parking lot. This concludes staff presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant represented by Joe San Clemente, our Public Works Director, is also in the audience.
Thank you very much. So now's the time for council member questions. So I want to just encourage council members to ask as many questions as possible. We'll keep it to questions first, then open it up for public comment. Then when we're finished, we will deliberate. And since Mayor Pro Tem Seaman and Councilmember Jackson were the two that requested us to reexamine the Planning Commission decision, I'd be glad to open it up to either of you two first. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned the Coastal Commission approval. What is the status of the Coastal Commission approval on this project?
The Coastal Commission has the project under review, but they cannot approve it until the project's been approved by the city.
Okay, so as soon as we're finished with it, then they, there'll be a hearing immediately? Or does it take some time? I'm just trying to get an idea of the timing on that.
I, the Director of Public Works may be able to answer. I do not know the specific process that the Coastal Commission has selected or if they've identified which process that they're going to apply for it. Because the Coastal Commission itself has a tier range of approval processes. Some require hearings, some are waivers, and there's another category called exemption.
Well, that'd be great if we could. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Good evening. So right now, we do have an application with the California Coastal Commission. They did say that the project would likely go through with either a waiver or exemption, which would be more of an administrative process, but would have to go to their board for approval. So at this point, we've submitted, we've gotten initial comments back from Coastal Commission, but they're not going to be able to proceed with final approvals until we have the precise development plan local approval. It is contingent on that.
But they did say that would likely be a waiver?
Yes, because this is a fairly low-impact project. But it was either a waiver or an exemption that they would potentially grant.
And how long would that take? I mean, it was just a waiver, it'd be a matter of weeks, a couple of days?
We don't know.
Okay. All right. The other question I had is regarding the removal of the trees on the north end. It's my understanding that we have sidewalk and then parkway where the trees are. And then there's a line there that is the end of the parking area. So the trees had to be removed, which was explained a few minutes ago. Trees had to be removed in order to be able to create a planter. How does that, what planter, the planter that the trees are already in? In the parkway? Or is there another planter going in next to that? Or I don't, I don't see that on the plan. I'm trying to get an idea what that, what reason are we taking trees out to make a planter?
So the, the trees that are there do conflict with the construction of the planter area that we have as well as the construction of the solar array that is going to be installed. But they are in direct conflict with that. And were they to remain, even if we found a way to have them remain next to the solar canopy, they would shade or interfere with that potential use. They are directly in the way, though, of the project as designed.
So the solar canopy is, trees are taller than the solar canopy? And overhang the solar canopy?
They would potentially overhang or grow into it. It would be an ongoing maintenance issue. But there are a number of elements that it would directly conflict with.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it for you? Okay. Mayor, Councilmember Detoy.
Thank you. I don't think anyone in this room is surprised that Park Lot D is currently not where I take our visitors to show the beauty of Hermosa Beach. But the question is, is at what point and what dollar amount, you know, simple repaving, what triggers all the ADA improvements? If we're to scale back this project, and if the simple, the simple repaving and restriping of lines would that require the ramp and the bigger project as proposed?
All right, thank you for that question. So right now, the lot itself is on a steep grade. It is not ADA compliant. We have identified Lot D as part of our city's commitment to ADA. It's in our transition plan. So the city does have responsibility to bring this in compliance through the life of the transition plan. We have had an ADA consultant look at this in detail to evaluate different options that are in there. And the challenge is that once we do substantial resurfacing, it triggers those ADA requirements, and we have to bring it up to current standard. Which, really, the best alternative is to construct the switchback ramp that connects the upper tier to Manhattan Avenue. We considered other options that are lower cost, but they don't provide the, the level of need that we would have, and they'd really just be an intermediary option. And we'd likely have to come back or potentially be subject to grievances in the future if we don't construct the right improvement. And so, as designed, even if we were to do a resurfacing, we would still be required to build that ramp and bring it up to compliance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? 1.8 million is the rough cost of the project, correct?
So 1.8 million is the total CIP budgeted amount or anticipated expenditure on the project. It's 1.815. However, that breaks down. However, that breaks down to about $180,000 in design costs. Most of that's been expended. We have, we currently estimate the construction cost to be about 1.45 million. That's the engineer's estimate. We don't know the true price until it bids, and we receive actual bids from qualified contractors. We have budgeted some additional funds in there as contingency, in case bids do come in higher, and we have about $80,000 for construction period inspection and support services, which brings us up to 1.85. But the goal is to try to have some contingency buffer in there over the current cost of the project. But that's the general breakdown.
And 850,000 is from the two grants, which are subject to being lost if we delay anything too much longer, correct?
Is correct. $857,000 attributed to the two grants. The grant that is at the greatest level of risk is the funds from the California State Coastal Conservancy. It's about half that amount. Those funds lapse in February and are subject to no further extension. The other funds, that are about $400,000 or so, do have additional timeline on it, and they're less of a concern, and there is potential to extend those funds, but the Coastal Conservancy grants are the ones at high risk.
And then the other funder is 950,000 from the Storm Drain Fund, correct?
The other half is about 423,000. So all in all, we have about 857 in grants. One from Measure W, Regional Safe Clean Water Program, that's 423, and there's another 433 from the California State Coastal Conservancy. Coastal Conservancy grant is the one that's going to lapse in February. We have additional time on the Measure W money.
But then you, we also have money coming from the Storm Drain Fund.
That's correct. So locally, we have money in our Storm Drain Fund and local Measure W funds. That's the other half.
And how much is being used from the Storm Drain Fund?
We have about $758,000 in Storm Drain Funds and $200,000 Measure W.
So, the reason we're able to use those funds is because of the nature of the project with storm drain diversion and all that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, if we went to a scaled-back project where we would just improve the lot, we wouldn't be allowed to, we would lose the grants, and we wouldn't be able to use the Storm Drain Fund as well, correct? We'd have, it would have to come out of general funds if we were to improve the lot.
If we do a different project, we would have to reapply, so we will lose the state Coastal Conservancy funds. They've indicated there are no further extensions on it, and without the sustainability elements, it's unlikely that we could use the Storm Drain or Measure W local funds that we have, because those are for stormwater use. So really, depending on if there is a different scope of work for the project, we could determine whether it's appropriate to use those funds, but without a stormwater element, it wouldn't be appropriate to use it.
Right. And I believe we received a response earlier today from staff that stated if we were to do this over again and try to repave the lot, we would have to comply with ADA requirements, and that could cost somewhere roughly 900,000, is that correct? Out of, out of general fund money to improve the lot that wouldn't include all those other storm drain improvements?
That's correct, and that estimate includes both a redesign of the project and construction of resurfacing, replacing the damage retaining wall, replacing it with an ADA ramp, and the other aesthetic improvements that would come with this project that would have to come with a different project.
Okay. And then, the four items that were brought up as concerns, trash enclosure, grease trap, tree removal, and private residential gate. I guess we talked a little about the tree removal. If, would, is it typical that we would, or we could approve the project but put words to the effect that these concerns are taken care of as an addendum to approving the project? Or what's the status of those issues that were brought up?
So, Mayor Francois, just for clarification, you're asking if the four topics that were raised by Mayor Protem and that were here and available to address could be addressed while the project is still approved? And the answer is yes. The city is the property owner, and these are not major modifications to the design. The design is in final stage. However, similar to other projects, whether it's a private property owner or the city, there is room to make these modifications, and we believe that these four items can be addressed without delaying the project, depending on council direction.
Thank you very much. Any other councilman? Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you brought up something that reminded me of another question. Joe, are the grant money that we receive from two separate entities, what's the source of that grant money? I mean, ultimately, do those two entities who are granting the money to us, their source of income is taxes? Is that correct?
These come from the state, so I assume they come from some tax base, but that would be an assumption.
That would be what?
It would be an assumption of how they get their funding. I couldn't tell you where the funds come from, but it is a state agency, so I'd assume that some tax revenue must pay for it.
Right.
But that is my best guess.
I agree with that. I think that it's pretty obvious that unless there's some evidence otherwise, that grant money is tax money. Somebody, someone's tax money ended up in that agency, and then they are granting it to different entities for different projects. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Now we will open it up for public comment. Adam City Clerk, any people have submitted comment cards regarding this project?
Yes, Robert, your three minutes will begin once you begin speaking.
We have Robert Luthard up first. Okay. Thank you very much. We'd like to stay in the order of the cards received, and then when we finish the cards, then anyone else from the public, feel free to speak. That's okay. You absolutely can do that when we finish with the ones that have turned the speaker cards in. Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. I live, my name is Robert Luthard, and I live at 1403 Manhattan Avenue. I am residing right across the street from the parking lot.
Do you mind pulling up the mic a little bit closer to you?
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
That's beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
Perfect.
You say it over? So I have lived there for 30 years, and one of the things that got me to buy the place was this lovely cactus that's across the street. The place looked a lot different at that time, but that cactus is still there, and I would like to be able to see that cactus when the new parking lot is in. I would really be unhappy if it was removed. It's, I have a better picture than you had up there. It flowers often. It's a really lovely thing to look at, and I don't want to lose it. The, I, something came up, I didn't intend to say anything about this, but those trees that you were talking about, when I moved here, they weren't there. And the current, at that time, the current city council required the business people who were using the trash cans to plant shrubbery there, bushes, to hide the trash cans. These pieces of shrubbery have grown up, and the branches disappeared, and now they're trunks, and you can see the trash cans again. And so, the original purpose for the being there is long gone. Anyhow, I just thought you'd like the background information. I would really like to see that cactus survive this transition. Anyway, if you have, I have photos of it. If you would like me to email them to you so you can see what it looks like.
Feel free to email us photos, sure.
So, who do I email them to?
You can email them to the city clerk, and...
City clerk?
Yeah, she can provide the email address. And when we finish all the speakers tonight, then we can address your questions after we finish public testimony. That's usually how we do it, instead of answering questions right now.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, I understand.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have Scott Hayes?
Mayor, City Council, I strongly encourage you to approve the Lot D improvement project. At the CIP study session on April 18th, the project was put on hold at the request of Councilmember Seaman in order to investigate alternative project scenarios. At this time, council was warned by staff that this pause had the potential to put some of the grant funding in jeopardy. After investigating an alternative scenario at the council meeting on June 4th, by a three-to-two vote, council directed Public Works to proceed with the Lot D project as designed. Public Works has since worked diligently to move this project forward, and the project received approval from the Planning Commission on August 20th. On September 10th, Councilmembers Seaman and Jackson pulled this item to council's jurisdiction over concerns about grease traps, trash bins, and tree removals. I believe that these concerns were just a filibuster to delay the project to a point where the grant funding will expire and the project will die due to lack of funding. While I respect Councilmember Seaman and Councilmember Jackson's opposition to the project, the council has voted on this project and provided direction for the Public Works Department to proceed with it. All of these delays have kept the Public Works Department from focusing on the rest of CIP projects. Whenever they have to take time to create an additional staff report, they are not working on the next sewer project or street project. It is time to move forward with this project. Failure to do so will cost the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars in lost grant money. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Nancy.
Good evening again. I'm Nancy Schwapack. I still live on North Hermosa Avenue. I'm changing here because I did not see information related to the ADA compliance in anything that I read. I tried to go back as far as I could and read meeting minutes and staff reports, but basically, it seemed to me, as staff indicated, this was conceived in 2017 as a demonstration project integrating environmentally friendly design options. It adds three parking spaces, two of which are golf cart charging stations, for a total of 22 spaces. When you add up all the design and construction costs, including the grant money, this is $89,000 per parking space without meaningfully increasing our parking supply. We're throwing, I couldn't get the numbers straight, I was writing quickly as Mayor Francois was asking what's gone, what's still to be spent, but it seems like we might be spending up to another million of good local money, even if it is sewer funds, on this project. When it was brought up previously to be requested to be reviewed, the best I could surmise was, hey, the trains already left the station, we have these grant funds, they're going to expire. That was in February 2023. Now here we are in October 2024, and we're still saying the trains left the station, we're going to lose the grant funds. I just heard it might be 900K to reach ADA compliance, even with just repaving. But to me, this is just an example of, like, where are we spending our money? I sat and listened to the parking in Luffy discussion, and Lot D was mentioned over and over and over, and in the Planning Commission meeting approving the PDP, they're like, what happened to Lot D being used for the in Luffy? And Planning Commission asked staff, hey, have there been studies? What are the maintenance costs going to be for this, for the facilities, for these permeable barriers? How are they cleaned? How are they maintained? You know, what are they? And the answer was basically, we don't know. Now maybe somebody does know, but the person presenting to Planning Commission didn't know. So, you know, I support environmentally friendly options. I am, I love all of that. I want to keep our oceans clean, but I do not support a demonstration project. We're a small town, we don't need to be engaged in cutting-edge stuff. There are lots of tried and true technologies out there. Simply sloping with a biological swale is a solution lots of people use. Again, I don't know about the ADA compliance part, but it just sort of seems to me that this took on a life of its own, and despite best efforts of some people, it just kept going. And I'd sort of like to, if we can, stop the train and decide, okay, where are in Luffy's going to go? Is there a better way to just do this? That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Catherine.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and the council. I'm just wondering, sitting here, because I remember in 2017, when I spoke to a young lady over in the office, and she was so excited about this parking lot, that they were updating it and doing such wonderful things. And thinking now, and just listening to this gentleman that was speaking, and wondering, it's a perfectly good parking lot. People use it all the time. They put their money in, you get your pay from the parking lot. And I'm not sure why we need to spend so much money on the fancy mansion. I rather believe that other young lady, that other lady was talking about the fact, do we really need to make another? I think there was some concern about making it more friendly, more perhaps considering even the flooring, the roadwork was going to be something special, which I'm not quite sure what precisely. But this person that I spoke to was really, really excited about this project. And now thinking about it, I think it's just, if they just need to renovate it, you don't need to change it. You don't need to go digging and dusting and changing those trees. Well, maybe, maybe prune them. And there's, and the trash, which is used by the restaurant, and the oil collection is used by all the restaurants in that area. So I'm really, it is on public property, and they're using their bins and their oil collecting, and I'm not quite sure where that comes from. And that poor house with the three apartments and their private doorway was merely so that people wouldn't be parking in there, at the back of their house. So I think you need to consider it. Maybe I'm wrong, but just really consider all the actions there before you make a decision, because it's, go down and take a look. It's always busy. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Joe Bailey.
My name's Joe Bailey, and I own the property just to the south of the parking lot there. And I did kind of prepare a statement. If I could get three minutes, I'd appreciate it. But anyway, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter, and I'd like to respectfully ask the city to approve the building permit for the motorized gate requested by the city that has already been submitted, and allow us to retain the gate and our access to the four parking spaces on our property that we have accessed as it is now for over eight years, and prior to that, another 15 years. I've owned the property for 30 years. I'm also grateful if this issue is to be decided by this council and not just one city official. With that said, I'd like to bring attention to my concerns. As planned, the city is permanently gifting almost 10% of the property for the private use of the Underground Bar's trash and grease pit, while at the same time, by not allowing us to have a motorized gate on our own property and denying us access, seems like unequal treatment by the city. Also, on any given day, especially after 4:00 PM, this lot is basically private parking for the Underground Bar. It would be extremely unfair to subject the residents of 1331 Manhattan Avenue to compete for parking with the patrons of the Underground Bar every night, not to mention the safety and the security concerns. I believe that the decision should be made in the best interest of the city and the residents. How is eliminating four to six spaces of off-city street parking good for the city? When that is 15% to 20% of the total parking in this lot, it certainly is not good for the residents of 1331 Manhattan Avenue or its owners. it certainly is not good for the residents of 1331 Manhattan Avenue or its owners. Access from the alley is too narrow and not possible, and also because of a power pole and stop sign, and the fact that the bar's patrons lock their bikes in this area encroaching on and blocking our access to our own property. Also, both front and rear entrances of the bar are off this alley and directly behind our property. Bar patrons congregate in this alley to smoke and vape and still drink, even though it's against city ordinances. Forcing the residents of 1331 Manhattan Avenue to negotiate this leads to problems like trespassing and assault. Is the city to accept the liability for these potential situations? Because the fact is, the city is clearly not enforcing their own ordinances. Again, unfairly favoring the Underground Bar over the residents of 1331 Manhattan Avenue. I'm asking for a common sense solution, good for all concerned. I'm happy to support the improvements on this city lot, and I'm hoping that the city will allow the access we've enjoyed for almost 25 years. And I did fully remodel this property in 2015, received a COO in 2016 for the opening, and what I understood in the access, the full access, to our property from this parking lot. The city gave us one letter, sent us one letter in 2018. Our attorneys answered it. We heard nothing from them for six years until just recently. So that's where we're at, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Daniel Bailey.
Hello. Just to add tail on to what's going on, I'm also an owner at 1331 Manhattan Avenue. We would benefit from the aesthetic improvement that'll be created by the improvement. But if the city isn't taking into account that there is going to be a net negative gain in parking spaces into the city by excluding access from the parking lot to the property, the city's going to spend $1.8 million to end up with one less parking space in the city of Hermosa Beach. I don't know how that is appropriate allocation of city or grant funds to get to the goal that I think everybody's trying to get to. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Evening, Council. David Grayson, Public Works Commission. So we've been talking a lot about this project, and even talking about some design features at this late stage in the process. I just want to remind us, what we're here for is really a planning matter. This is about reviewing the findings of the Planning Commission with respect to CEQA and the PDP. And you have a whole draft resolution in front of you to approve with a list of findings. And I'm not hearing a lot of talk about those findings. I think unless you really can provide a substantive argument and facts as to why those findings by the Planning Commission and their approval is invalid, we stick to business and we do what the matter at hand is for tonight, which is not to discuss the merits of the project or to polish the design, but to make it through this step so that we can move forward, then go to the Coastal Commission, and then it'll come back at the time of construction. We have to do something here, and we've agreed that the council has approved the project in its current form. Well, we can't be dysfunctional. We need to make a decision. And then, once we make a decision, at some point, we have to move on. Put the pencil down and move on to the next step. We can't keep second guessing ourselves. We can't be designing it while it's constructed. We can't be continuously getting input, as much as I value public input, because we'll never get anything done, and it's just disruptive. I feel for some of these people coming in with the concerns, but I feel like there comes a point where we can still try to see what, how we can accommodate them in the time we have left with the design. I'm not saying don't do anything, but we really need to show that we can function as a city and get things done. How does this look to somebody who wants to do business with the city, to come in as a contractor, to make a bid? Someone who have perspective in place, an engineer that wants to come and work here? You know, we really need to be able to get our act together, I'm sorry to say. So, and I empowered a staff to solve any of the residual problems that were brought up last time. And by the way, I'm not sure that any of them, or many of them, are actually relative to the findings of the Planning Commission. But that doesn't mean we don't look at them. But I'm just bringing that up because, again, let's stick to what we're here to accomplish tonight. I have faith in the staff, and I'd like you to empower them to solve these issues as they can in a way that will not throw us off the schedule and enable us to keep going on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the council chambers wishing to speak? Okay, Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone online?
We do. Anthony Higgins, your three minutes will begin once you're unmuted.
Yeah, hello. I kind of disagree a little bit with Commissioner Grayson. There still is time to talk about how we got into this mess and how to avoid it going forward. If we don't talk about that now, then when? Let's talk a little bit about the whole thing with the coastal plan. Now, if we had an approved coastal plan, would we need to go to the Coastal Commission for another approval? I think that's something you should be talking about. Let's talk about that date easement. There's been so much discussion of this, yet no one can say, when this project is completed, will access to that parking lot, that private parking lot, be eliminated when the project is completed? I think the public and the building owner need to hear that. I think the 800-pound gorilla is that we're, and why there's so much resistance and friction is that we're spending $2 million of taxpayer money. How many new parking spots are we getting? Are we actually losing parking spots and spending $2 million? I mean, you know, when I hear that we're going to spend $2 million and not gain any parking spots, I wonder what the hell we're spending our money on. Finally, you know, we've had like three different public Planning Commission meetings and two or three different city council meetings on this. And only now, after all those meetings, are there definitive answers coming back on the garbage problem, the easement, the trees, the grease trap, or the lack thereof? Only now. Why did it take three Planning Commission meetings, three, two or three different council meetings, for those issues finally to be resolved? Why are we spending $2 million and not getting any more parking spaces? What will happen to that gentleman's access when the project is completed? And why the hell don't we have a coastal plan so we don't have to go to the Coastal Commission with, for all these little small approvals? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you are joining via Zoom, now is the time to raise your virtual hand. Mayor, I do not see any other virtual hands raised for this item.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask that, since we've completed with public comment, if we can take a recess so that we can try and reset the air conditioning and try and reduce some of the noise that's going on in there? I think that would be helpful. We did call Robert. He is our after-hours Public Works gentleman, and he'll need to go into the back panel for a little bit, if that's okay.
That's fine, I think, without objection. What, he in 10 minutes?
15.
15, 15 minutes, okay. 15 minutes recess. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, Mr. Mayor, please do not discuss the item. That's before the-
Mr. Mayor, we can go ahead and call the meeting back to order.
Yeah, let's reconvene our meeting and Madam City Clerk, could we have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Massey.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember DeToye.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sengman.
Here.
Mayor Fransaw.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, do you have an update for the status of what's going on here with our system?
I do, I do. So, Robert from our team came and checked every possible electrical panel that we have, and everything is working fine. We believe that the surge actually damaged the thermostat, so we're going to go all natural this evening and just leave the doors open. I like to share that I'm very comfortable because I'm often freezing, so, but I do realize it's uncomfortable. So, the doors will stay open. Anne has the magic code to keep them propped open. They don't stay open just because we do that, so she's able to do that. And I'm just very grateful to our Public Works team for being able to come out, as well as our IT team member, who is our contracted IT representative, who came from home to assist because with the power surge, we also had our cable cast view that went down, and that's why it was not available for folks to view remotely. And so, that too had to be fixed. There's a lot of resetting that needed to happen. So, I share all this really just to beg everyone's grace and indulgence and also to express how grateful I am to our team, both in-house and contract team.
Thank you very much. And thankfully, this happened on an evening when our agenda wasn't so packed, so we hopefully can still get out here in a reasonable time this evening. So, we had just finished up public testimony, and we were back now to begin deliberations. And I wanted to ask Madam City Manager, yes?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Okay.
Do we not have an opportunity to speak to public comments?
Oh, sure.
Would that be now or?
Yeah, and I had a few questions. We can go to you next if you want.
No, no, that's fine. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I just didn't want to skip it.
It's all part of our deliberation, so.
Right, thank you.
I have a question on the two residents that lived at 1331 Manhattan Avenue. Do you have any information on what's going on with that address and the access that they need or don't have?
They received two letters from the city, one in 2018 and the other in 2024. In no uncertain terms did the city ever provide an easement to the developer and property owner. So, they were fully aware that they were constructing access contingent on being able to enter through our property at their own risk. They made that decision themselves. The city was very clear that we were not granting an easement. And that's the update that I have, that they have been informed. Joe, as well as Doug, I believe, went out, the two of them, went out and met with the owner to discuss this. So, it would be quite untrue to suggest that they were unaware. They made the decision on their own and took the risk.
No, they're using our lot at their own risk, but they can still enter their garage without going through our lot?
They cannot, not the way that they, it's not currently, no.
Testing, okay. I think I understood the question to be, without that access from the city lot, can they still access their garage? And they can, in fact, from the alley. The garage door faces the alley, and they can access the enclosed parking space from that. And then, there is an opening to the north, a gate to the north of that. It is on the narrow side, but conceivably, a vehicle may be able to make access to the other portions of the lot through that.
Okay, thank you. And then, the other resident that had a question on the cactus, that's not involved in this project, is it, the cactus they're referring to?
There is a cactus on site. I don't know if we can pull up the presentation, but it was pictured in one of the photos. It is towards the northeast portion of the lot. And I believe, let me look at the plans real quick. I believe it is going to be removed due to the reconfiguration. Can we pull up?
We can go back to it if you want while you're looking at it.
Okay.
If you need time to look it up.
Oh, it would be my presentation. I don't, this might be the Public Works directors.
This photo on the left shows you the cactus, which is, oh, I guess it won't show on the blue.
But there's a cactus in the forefront of the picture. And then, if we go to the site plan that is proposed, I believe that area of the lot is being reconfigured.
So, they would either have to modify the structure. But again, there is an access gate to the left that may accommodate smaller profile vehicles, motorcycles for sure, but it is a little on the narrow side.
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
Since you're right there, and we are on this discussion of the access to the garages, was a driveway of sorts on the alley on the original drawings for the neighbor's house? For this 13, whatever the address is where this, where this gate is and so on and so forth? Was that their approved access in the first place?
Through the city lot?
No, of course not, on the alley. So, they did have a designated driveway of sorts, whether it was sloped with curbs and gutters and so on, but there was a driveway access into their parking that was approved on the original set of plans?
Yeah, thank you. If I could have the opportunity, just because I work more closely on the code enforcement side, where we've had the opportunity to review the remodel plans, as well as all of the historical photos going back on this property. When the property was remodeled, I think it was between 2015 or 16, pardon my vagueness on the time, that original plan showed a solid wall where the motorized gate is today, between 1331 and Lot D to the north. And then, the, there was a label marking the driveway in the space between the garage and the north property line. And so, that driveway is the space that Alexis referred to as being narrow, simply because that driveway does not, is not as wide as what you would typically find a single-car driveway to be today. It's a little more narrow, but that was what was labeled on the plans. So, hopefully, that clarifies some of the questions that are being asked about the access. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. It's perfect, it's what I wanted to know. Is there any reason why they couldn't widen that driveway? I mean, is there a wall there, a building there, or something in the way that they couldn't go from, leave the north property line alone? Clearly, there's a wall and a power pole and so on. Couldn't they go south and widen the driveway that way to give more access?
Unfortunately, so between the property line, used to have a fence rather than a solid block wall.
Right.
And now, it's got whatever apparatus or infrastructure is allowing for the motorized gate to happen. I don't know. But when it went from a fence to the wall, that likely added to a little bit of thickness there, which then decreased the width of that driveway. But then, you have the wall of the existing garage. And so, if you were to widen, that's really where the limitations come in, is the block wall and the garage wall.
Gotcha, all right, thank you.
So, is this something, this isn't the first we've heard about this, right? I mean, the planning department's gone through this issue, and is it resolved, or I'm kind of?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's not a planning department issue. Public Works has worked with them. Code Enforcement has worked with them. So, it's not relevant to the development, it's not relevant to the progress of Lot D.
Oh, okay.
We have worked with them separately because they built without a permit. They weren't issued a permit for this.
Okay, okay, that's what I was trying to clarify. Thank you very much. And then, regarding the cactus, so, the plan is to remove five trees and the cactus, is that correct? In addition to the five trees, is that what is?
Hi, Mayor, that's correct, Mayor. The plan is to remove five trees and replace with five trees. The cactus is slated for removal because it's in the way of the improvements. The project will, does include a native and drought-tolerant plant pallet, but it does not accommodate the replacement of the cactus.
I guess because it's not considered a tree, so we don't have a replacement policy for the cactus, is that?
It's not considered a tree.
Yeah, so, okay. Thank you. Okay. Mayor Protam, do you have any other questions?
Not of staff, I have to move on to comments.
Well, feel free to go ahead, sure.
Great, thank you.
So, before we begin deliberations, I wanted to just comment on a few things in public comment. Mr. Hayes mentioned that I was conducting a filibuster, and I could understand why you would think that, and it probably could very much look like that. But I want to point out to you that the three, or was it four? Now, I can't remember, to be honest with you. Earlier discussions in planning, in the council here, was not about the existing CIP at all. It was never meant to be that. Those were discussions about putting a second-level parking structure in there. And it came back around three times, and I was in favor of doing that all three times, and still am. But that was not a filibuster to try and delay anything, to lose the grant money. I just want to point that out to you. To the rest of you that thought that we were just spending too much money on this, I appreciate your point of view, and we could better use our money, and I will get to that in a moment. And so, if it's time for deliberations, I'd like to begin.
Go ahead.
So, seven years ago, 2017, the existing CIP 682 is labeled an environmental showpiece. That's what it was meant to be. I'm not really sure what mindset was going on on council in 2017, but that's what they wanted, that's what they voted for. $1.8 million wanted to be spent on a garden, and the parking lot just kind of happened to get in the way a little bit. The garden had some water features that reclaimed some water, rainwater, and so on and so forth. There were some solar panels and grout-free plants, et cetera, et cetera. Let me be very clear, I am not now, nor have I ever been, against environmental measures. I think it's an important part of our city. I think we should be doing those things. But at some point, we have to ask ourselves, who's paying for this stuff? Is it just money that pops up out of the world? Do some environmental group somewhere give us millions of dollars to spend on these things? Well, the answer is no. It's tax money that pays for these things. It's tax money that's going to pay, might pay for all of CIP 682. Now, you say, well, there was $850,000 for the grant money. That's true. But I think we've established this evening that grant money is tax money. It may not have come directly out of our pockets. It's not our sales tax or our property tax. I don't know where it came from, but when it goes to the state or it goes to the county, and they give it to an environmental group, and that environmental group turns around and gives it back to us, rest assured, it's somebody's tax money. So, how we spend it is just as important as how we spend our own tax money. And I think that somewhere along the line, in our city, there's a number of people that don't think we should be spending this kind of money on these kind of projects. It comes up in debates recently. We're in an election era, not going to get into the election, but I'm going to say that as a outgrowth of the election, the question is, what do you think about the tax measure? And the answer is invariably, we should spend our money more wisely before you ask for more. Whether that's right or not, or wrong, I don't want to get into. But this is the feeling that I get from my constituents, from the city, from the candidates, et cetera, et cetera. We should spend our money more wisely before we ask for more money. So, with that in mind, I'd like to point out that $1.8 million was allotted for this project that gives no clear benefit to the city. I think it is a waste of taxpayer dollars. I think, including the $850,000 of grant money, which is tax money. I think we have spent $152,000 of that $1.8 million so far. Let's not throw good money after bad. Instead, let's stop here. Let's reconsider some other use for this property. This is a very valuable asset we have here. They're not making any more Beach City, as everybody used to say back in the day, and that's why it gets more and more and more expensive. And when a city owns a large section of property, and this is relatively large, when you look around the city, there aren't too many other places in the city that are this big. When you own an asset like this, it's a precious asset. We need to use it for the very best thing we can come up with. And we need to spend our money on the very best things we can do for the city. I have no problem with letting go with our grant money. There's grant money coming around the corner again someday. There's lots, I believe that if a new project were to be envisioned there, there would be grant money to pay for part of it in one way or another. So, again, let's not throw good money after bad. I think at least we should wait until the civic assessment evaluation takes a look at this and comes up with some new ideas to be considered. I think the more money we spend on this CIP now, the harder it's going to be to stop it at any one point or to finish this project. And $1.8 million from now, in two years or three years, we're going to turn around and go, hey, this would be a great library or something. And then, we've wasted $1.8 million of our tax money, our hard-earned money, on something that we're going to just dig it up and start all over again. This is why I say we need to stop this now before we waste any more money on this project. I think, it's, excuse me, I think that we should be good stewards of the gifts we've been given. This is not the highest, best use of this property, not even close. This produces little or no benefit to the city. Whether it's a larger parking lot, a commercial building, a library, a visitor's center, a teen center, or any of a dozen possibilities, we should look at those things and say, let's do that, instead of CIP 682. And that's why I ask that we pause on this and let the civic assessment program take a look at this and come up with some new ideas to see if there isn't something better. If they can do that before the grant money is up, fine and dandy. If it isn't, I'm sorry, I think this is the best thing for us to do in the first place. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate those of you who said, honestly, we're wasting money on this, we should stop now. I totally agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As pointed out, we've discussed this on the merits four or five times now. Whether you view it from the narrow inquiry that we are to, as Commissioner Grayton pointed out, as to whether this project is categorically exempt under CECL, which it no doubt is, and whether or not the precise development plan meets the findings that are required, which it no doubt does, or whether you want to take the broader inquiry, again, that we've had several times, the balance of interests weighs in favor of the project as proposed. It was described, and respectfully, by Mayor Protam as an environmental showpiece, and Mayor Protam said that the council in 2017, of which I was a member, wanted a garden, and a parking lot got in the way. I was at those meetings. That is an inaccurate rendition. The council wanted to look at Lot D, which has fallen into significant disrepair and needs substantial renovation in order for it to be safe for people to walk on at night. We've had people trip and fall in it in order for the slope to be safe. The council wanted to add parking, improve drainage, make the lot self-powering, beautify the lot and the area surrounding it, and increase accessibility and durability. And they wanted to access grant funding. And some of those features happen to overlap with available pots of money that are available to all Californians, including stormwater funding and including sustainability funding, which we did. And now, the project as proposed is basically half-paid for by grants. So, now, the fifth time council members have asked to circle back and discuss the merits of this project, it still makes sense as proposed, and I will still be voting in favor of it. And on the narrower question that's before us, it passes both of those inquiries as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city staff. You guys have worked your tails off on this, and your efforts are certainly appreciated. Certainly understand the time and the tremendous effort in these staff reports and going back and forth. And, you know, quite frankly, I'm glad that we were having these conversations because the easy thing for us to do right now is just approve this and move on, right? Next project, one of 50 that we've got, closer to 500. But we've got a lot of irons in the fire, and this is obviously a significant project. Like I said, the easy thing to do is to approve this and to move on. You know, I think of this in terms of the sunk cost fallacy, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with the sunk cost fallacy, and it's, it creeps into a lot of major decision-making. You know, we're reluctant to abandon a strategy or cause of action because of the investment that we've put in this, even when it's clear that abandonment would be more beneficial. And I, I don't consider this project a waste of money. Anyone who goes by Parking Lot D is embarrassed. It is horrible in every sense of the word. So, improving that, I think, is something that we need to do. The question is when and how? And I am not convinced that the grant money driving this project should be the reason we are trying to move this project through as quickly as we are, understanding we've had several bites of the apple, and we've asked to have it brought back several times. But at the end of the day, the city owns very little property. So, everything we do, we have to figure out the highest and best use. And investing almost $2 million into a parking lot where there's, obviously, there's some benefit, but is that the highest and best use for that piece of property? When, quite frankly, I was at the underground last night with some dads, and, you know, a couple of them said, hey, some, you know, apartments over this parking lot might be a good idea, all on their own, not prompted by me. So, and I say that to illustrate the fact that we might need, I truly believe we need to take a step back, and maybe the right course is through the facilities assessment, when we're looking at all our facilities and all of our property and trying to figure out, okay, what do we have and what do we want? What do we want going forward? And is this the highest, best use of this very expensive piece of property already? And then, if we invest $2 million in improving it, is that the highest and best use of that property? And I am not convinced it is, and I can make a finding with regard to item 10. But obviously, it takes three of us to approve not moving forward with this. So, I am prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, but I will wait until we hear from the rest of our colleagues.
Thank you very much. I'm concerned about the project, and it's not the best thing in the world, but we have progressed this far on it. It needs improvement, it needs it now. What we do 10, 15, 20 years down the line, if we're going to reutilize our resources for other purposes, then that comes then. But the lot needs improvement. And if we do nothing, and we pave it ourselves and do the ADA compliance, that's $900,000 of our taxpayers' money that needs to be spent to just do that. And we've already spent $152,000 on this project so far. So, I'm inclined to support this project. The funding and the grants comes from state funding, and if it goes away, it'll be utilized by some other jurisdiction somewhere else. We won't get the funding if we don't have these storm and drainage and environmental aspects to it. That's the reason we have the funding. So, fiscally, it just doesn't make any sense to pull this project now, and I'm inclined to agree with the Planning Commission's findings on this project and move forward on it. Let's see, Councilmember DeToye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tend to agree with your comments, and along with Councilmember Massey. What's before us tonight is the four findings that were of concern by my colleagues, and I'm content with staff's answers to those. And one of the things that really convinced me, or, you know, one of the bits of information is, any bit of improvement on this is going to trigger the ADA requirements for the ramp, which, as staff estimated, is close to 900. which, as staff estimated, is close to $900,000 to $1 million, which would be out of our CIP fund in the city. You know, we talk about the civic study right now. This has been going on since, this parking lot just itself has been going on since 2017, to think that within six months to a year that we're going to have a grand plan for our civic facilities, even if this is one site that's identified. I mean, we're resurfacing Parking Lot A, we're restriping it. That's even a bigger piece of land, questionably more valuable. So should we not do that either? So at what point do we, is, this is a good improvement for that area? And what is before us tonight is those four specific findings. And with that, I am happy to support staff's recommendation on this item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A move that we determine that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt a resolution approving the precise development plan for the reconstruction of an existing city-owned surface parking lot located at the southwest corner of 14th Street and Manhattan Avenue, subject to the conditions reflected in Attachment 1.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Detoy. Is there any more discussion before we go have the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to rebut some of the arguments from the other side of this. Honestly, I can't understand how anyone can look at this project and say that we've already spent $152,000, so we really have to go on with the rest of it. The other $1.8 billion, we should just go ahead and toss right in there too and let it all go because we've already spent some money on it. Is that kind of an absurd proposition? I want to point out one more time. I keep hearing that we have gone over this four times, and it's been denied each time. All four of those times that this has been discussed in this council, we have been discussing a multi-level parking structure, not this project. Not this project. Not CIP 682. We have been discussing a multi-level parking structure. So to say that this is the fifth time we're doing it is not true at all. This is the last time we're going to do this, I'm sure. And so I would just like to make a final plea to those two of you who are, were wavering and have now made a decision to reconsider wasting more money on something just because we've already begun. That makes no sense to me. And that's my final report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Massey.
Thank you. Just respectfully again, Mayor Protam. My vote is not driven by the fact that we've spent $150,000 and we're in it for a penny, we're in it for a pound. It's because I think when you weigh all of the various interests, including parking and the other features and the development of that part of town, this project makes sense. Makes more sense than a double-decker parking lot, in my opinion, which is why I'm voting for the project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I concur with Councilmember Massey's position. Double door, double parking lot, you know, doesn't seem to make sense. And it would, you know, we'd have to spend tons of taxpayers' dollars not using grant money, not even using the storm water fund, which pays for most all of this project. So I don't think it's absurd, but that's where we are on that. Any other comments before we go ahead and take a vote? And I appreciate the passion you have, Mr. Mayor Trump, Protam, on this. I really do. I appreciate and I understand everywhere you're coming from on this.
That I do too.
Okay. So I got to tell you, you said that the grant money pays for over half of this. It actually doesn't. There's only $800,000 worth of it, and the project's $1.8 million. So there's $1 million more than half.
There's $800,000 from the Storm Grain Fund, which...
There's $850,000 total of grant money.
And another $800,000 from the Storm Grain Fund. Yes.
The other $1 million comes out of the general fund.
No, it comes from the Storm Grain Fund.
All right. I disagree with you. All right. Everybody's ready to vote?
I don't know. I hate to leave with a disagreement. We can clarify it again if you want. The Storm Grain Fund is our taxpayers' money, but it can only be used if the parking garage has storm drainage to it, which is the design of this garage.
You said the grant money.
Yeah.
There's two grants.
Storm Grain Fund I'm talking about, not the grant money. It's the Storm Grain Fund.
I appreciate it.
So it's the Storm Grain Fund...
I'm not going to quibble over words, okay? We're all ready to vote.
That's okay.
I'm just trying to tell you that what you said was the grant money pays for over half of it.
Yes.
There is $850,000 worth of grant money.
That's half of 1.8 million.
$800,000 is half of 1.8.
About, there's another 800 from the Storm Grain Fund, which brings us to 1.6 million, and we've already spent $152,000. So, you know, but it's the Storm Grain Fund I was referring to, not the grant money.
Call the vote.
Any other comments? Okay, Madam City Clerk, could you begin voting? Okay, the vote's been tallied up on the screen. Madam City Clerk, could you please announce the vote?
Motion carries by a 3-2 vote.
Could you list the council members voting for and against? Thank you, just so people, some people can't see the screen and just, you know.
Mayor Francois, Councilmember Detoy, and Councilmember Massey voted yes. Mayor Protam Saiman, Councilmember Jackson voted no.
Thank you very much. Okay, Madam City Clerk, I believe the next item we had pulled. So what do we have next on our agenda here?
Next, we have Item 17B, Side Letter to the Hermosa Beach Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Cindy Stafford, your interim HR manager. Are you going to put up the... Last time I didn't have my glasses, so I couldn't operate the remote control properly. So now I do. So before you is an amendment to the Police Officer Association MOU. Amendments are relatively common with labor contracts because they need to be more of a living and breathing document so that it's meeting the needs of the organization. I'm not touching anything. All right, so next slide, please. The Myers-Millias Brown Act, which we call the MMBA, mandates that local public agencies negotiate with their respective bargaining units on matters that are concerning wages, hours, and terms and conditions of employment. The current MOU for the POA is effective July 1, 2022, through the end of the fiscal year, June 30, 2025. The MMBA does allow agencies and the recognized employee associations to make mutually agreed-upon adjustments to the MOU through what we call side letters. In this particular case, we have a side letter that's addressing, you know, a side letter addresses emerging issues without altering the core memorandum of understanding. We did meet and confer with the POA for quite some time, and we reached agreement on December 23, 2024. Next. So staff recommends that the City of Hermosa City Council approve the resolution in side letter to the Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding, amending Article 29 to add subsection E, and then we need to renumber the following subsections of Article 29. Just a little bit of background. The MOU for the 2022-2025 fiscal years was approved by City Council on October 11, 2022. And thus far, this is the first side letter to this MOU. So a little bit of discussion. We do periodically need to amend our memorandum of understanding to ensure the document continues to meet the needs of the city and its employees. In this case, the city added a premium pay for a police officer assigned to a regional, federal, or multi-agency task force. The city did meet and confer with the POA and came to agreement on the 23rd, and a tentative side letter has been drafted that contains the provision as discussed. So in particular, the Article 29 of the POA MOU has to do with particular premium pays. As it exists right now, we have a premium pay they call detective pay. And it's police officers assigned to do detective work. They get a 9% premium pay. Historically, the agency has assigned a detective to work on a task force. These are inter-agency, multi-agency, regional-type task force on a part-time basis with no ability to assign the person to work on the task force on a full-time basis. So all this new article allows is, it gives the chief discretion to assign a police officer to a task force on a full-time basis should the need arise. So why the change? First, I want to point out, there is no fiscal impact to this change. The city is not adding an additional skill pay that the police... We are adding additional skill pay that police officers are eligible to get, but they're not adding the number of individuals that are eligible. You have a set number of individuals assigned to detectives. The individual that goes to the task force will come from that detective pool. So it's already budgeted, allocated, and there's no additional costs associated with it. Like I said a couple minutes ago, historically, a detective has been receiving detective premium pay periodically when assigned to their task force. And this just gives the chief flexibility to assign individuals on a full-time basis should the need arise. That's my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. I have a question. The report, and you stated that there's no fiscal impact to this. Could you briefly explain why there's no fiscal impact to this? Because we are adding a bonus to a position. And I'm wondering, if we add a bonus to a position, doesn't that mean that we are fiscally impacting it because we're paying an additional bonus?
That's a very good question. So the city has five budgeted detectives. If the chief of police were to give this premium pay to a detective, they lose their detective pay and they add the task force pay. They're not going to get it at the same time. It's what we call an assignment-based skill pay. So it's all, it's just the same kind of work but a different assignment. So we don't, they don't get a detective pay and task force pay at the same time, and they're not adding like a sixth person to get the task force. It's just swapping out the reasons for it.
But it is possible, if we didn't do this, one of the five detectives that's currently getting the bonus would go into this new position and not get the bonus, and therefore, we would have fiscal additional monies.
The way assignment-based skill pays work is you only get the skill pay or the premium pay, sorry, skill pay is my old job, the premium pay for the work that's being performed while you're getting that work. So they're not going to do detective work and task force work at the same time on a full-time basis. So they're going to get one or the other, not both. So it's a cost-neutral add. It's just giving a little bit of flexibility to the chief.
That is, if one of those five detectives goes into that position?
Correct. If they added someone, a sixth person randomly taking somebody out of patrol and putting them on the task force, theoretically, there would be an impact. But then that would be the police department going over what their budget allocations and what is approved.
So if someone came into that position that wasn't one of the five detectives, then the bonus would pertain to that position. Then we would be, we'd be fiscally in more money.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. That's not the item before the council today. The item before the council only makes one assumption, and that is a detective who currently is receiving that premium pay will no longer serve as detective and will now serve on the task force. That is the only scenario that's before the council right now. Your hypothetical that you shared, if that situation were to arise, we will come back with a separate item because there will be a fiscal impact. We will always have to come back to the council for any changes, whether it's to the MOU, anything that has to do with salary, only the council can approve. So there, those hypotheticals, should they come up? We will bring them back.
Okay. Thank you very much. That clarifies it for me. Any other council members have any questions? Okay. Thank you. Oh, yes.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Good question. I just wanted to talk for a second, and we might be able to do this during deliberation after we get public comment. But I wanted to hear a little bit about the benefit to the city and public safety of having our officers participate in these task forces. I think I can articulate it a little bit based on conversations with the chief because they serve on regional drug interdiction task forces, which relate to, for example, the flow of fentanyl into Hermosa Beach, which unfortunately often gets to kids here, and so on and so forth. And so the skills that they bring back from their experience on the task forces improves the performance of all of our officers. So incentivizing officers to participate in task forces really expands the knowledge base and the experience base and the skill level of our entire force in ways that are extraordinary. So I see the chief has rejoined us. Chief, if you would, can you just articulate for us the value to public safety in Hermosa Beach of having our officers participate in task forces?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember. This particular task force is one that we are aligned with the Department of Homeland Security. And they bring not only manpower resources by combining numerous agencies together to address crime issues, but they also bring resources, resources that will help us investigate larger-scale crimes. I've mentioned previously in my comments to council, we're seeing a lot of fraud, a lot of financial fraud from some of our residents. And those cases can be just massively compounded by paperwork and details and investigative necessities. And this is a task force that can help us with that. They have access to federal resources, which include federal prosecution on serious crimes. And when our detective serves in this capacity, they bring that, all of that back to the city of Hermosa Beach in ways that we would otherwise not have. To your point, when they are finished on that task force, and we do have a rotation, so they're not just there forever, they will bring all that experience back. They will share it with our detectives, with our patrol officers, and it helps all of us understand more what the capacity is for a wide, a large-scale investigation that might impact the city of Hermosa Beach.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Madam City Clerk, have there been any cards turned in on this?
We did not receive any speaker cards for this item. If you are joining by Zoom, now is the time to raise your virtual hand.